Could I get everybody to start finding a seat, please? We're going to start, so if you could find a seat, please. Good evening, everyone, to this special meeting of council. This meeting is called for the specific purpose to consider the Brampton Vision 2040: Living the Mosaic. Under council's meeting rules, no other business can be considered at this special meeting. Almost all members of council are present this evening. Could I just please remind everyone, please turn your cellphones and other electronic devices on to mute or non-audible for the course of the meeting, please. We have a motion from Councillor Moore, second by Councillor Bowman, that the agenda for the special council meeting of May 7th be approved as printed and circulated. All those in favor? That's Carrie. Does any member have a declaration of pecuniary interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act for any matter to be considered on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, if you could note that. We're going to start tonight's meeting with an introductory presentation from Antonetta Mikailo.
Mikailo.
Antonetta, she's the project manager of our planning vision. Following Antonetta, Larry Beasley from Beasley &amp; Associates Planning, Inc. will present the Brampton Vision 2040: Living the Mosaic. After the presentations, I would ask council that we refrain from asking questions at that point, and we proceed to hear from the public next through delegations. After hearing public delegations, staff and/or Mr. Beasley will provide any necessary responses or clarifications to the public delegations, and then council can ask its questions, and we can consider the 2040 planning vision document and covering staff report. Antonetta, Larry, please come forward for your presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council, leadership team, staff, and members of the public. Council, I know you've heard from me a lot, and I've been here with my engagement updates frequently, but I'd like to take a few moments this evening to summarize the engagement effort that has accompanied the planning vision journey. Let me say, before I get into it, it has been my honor and my privilege to get to know our community through this process. This started off as a corporate game changer, the planning vision. Council directed staff to look at the city in a more holistic way to envision the future of Brampton in 2040 and beyond. To undertake that task, the city sought the expertise of Larry Beasley to develop a vision. Now, what evolved from a planning vision game changer is really a vision for the entire city, and how did we get to a place and a document that revolves around so much more than planning? Under the direction of Larry, it was really our community who pushed us to think bigger, to tackle things that we typically don't tackle as a municipality, so I'm grateful to them for pushing us in that direction. What was so exciting and inspiring to us about the methodology that Mr. Beasley and his team brought to the vision was that the vision itself didn't even come into existence, pen wasn't put to paper, until robust community engagement had been conducted. Here's a glimpse of what we did: 95-plus community events in every geographic corner of the city, over 20-plus focus groups, and these typically lasted from two to three hours each, from a social media corporate impressions perspective, a reach of over 400,000. On our website, we had 1,277 ideas, pins, and votes submitted. Now, our public engagement was based on a series of principles and approaches. They're in front of you there: respectful, flexible, equitable, and creative. We wanted to value the voice of every person and honor that knowledge that they imparted on us, so we were respectful of people's times and all the things that compete for them on a daily basis, so we went to where people naturally were. We didn't expect them to come to City Hall. We made every effort to go to where they naturally congregated. That way, their participation in the vision process was easy, and we knew that engagement would be more robust that way. We were also flexible. Any time of day, evening, night, weekend, we wanted to be there. We didn't say no to any event that we knew was happening where we could genuinely be there and get feedback from our community. We also wanted it to be equitable. Here, we wanted to reach the young and in need, the old and alone, the successful and the struggling, the longtime Bramtonian and the newcomer, and everyone in between, because all of those voices mattered to us. To that end, we spent a day at Brampton Civic Hospital. We went to our youth homeless shelters. We went everywhere where people are, especially the people who are marginalized and disenfranchised and don't get an opportunity to engage with the city perhaps as much as they'd like. We also wanted to be creative, so our community told us a lot about the lanes in the downtown, and they felt it had this untapped potential, so we told them, "Community, not only are we listening, we heard you, and we're going to do something about it." So, for the first week in November, on a weekend, we took over McCarter Lane, and we transformed it through a process called tactical urbanism, a temporary intervention to show them the potential of the spaces in Brampton, and also to close that portion of our engagement period and thank them. Now, here's our data synthesis. Take a look at that and let that sink in for a moment. All the information we gathered from residents was typed, themed, and analyzed, and then it was shared with Larry Beasley and his team. This data forms the foundation of the vision, and you could really see how rich it is and how many areas it touches upon. Now, the intent is that this data not just benefit the planning vision, but everyone can benefit from this information, whether it's another city department, consultant, private residents, even businesses. We made all of this data open and accessible on our GeoHub, and within a week of it being on our GeoHub, Esri, a GIS platform, picked it up and featured it as a story, because they loved everything that it was representing and the public engagement shown in these types of ways. So if you haven't checked it out, I encourage you to see what your constituents and what your fellow residents had to say about our city. Now, how did we feed all this data into what we were doing? After all that information was synthesized in November, over 100 people, a combination of staff and residents, devoted an entire Saturday and Sunday to confirm the themes that had emerged from our public engagement and to give us direction on how to move forward with those specific themes. After that, Larry Beasley and his team created a draft of the vision, and we took that draft back to the public in March, again approximately 100 or so people, staff and the public, and they devoted their Saturday once more to confirm that we were on the right track, to tell us if there were any gaps, and if anything else needed to be addressed in the vision. Then we wanted to think bigger. Here, we were looking for, are we being bold enough? Are the best practices included in this document? And Larry Beasley made himself very vulnerable in this process, I feel, and I respect that and I commend that, because he opened it up to a professional and academic peer review. Here, Paul Bedford, former director of Metrolinks and former chief planner of the city of Toronto, were in attendance, as well as Dan Leeming, founding partner of the Planning Partnership and co-chair of the Canadian LEAD ND Review Committee, as well as board member with council on the Canadian Urbanism and Active Healthy Kids Canada. We also had Anne McIlroy join us. She's an inaugural member of the Toronto Waterfront Revitalization Corporations Design Review Panel, chair of the Mississauga Urban Design Advisory Panel, and member of the Toronto Community Housing Design Review Panel. And finally, Dr. Kevin Curtis, lecturer from the University of Waterloo from the School of Planning, joined us. After that, we wanted to go back to our staff for accuracy and completeness of the document, so we hosted subject matter expert reviews. A series of review sessions were held with city and regional staff to comment and review the chapters of the vision. After all of those inputs, the document made its final form. So we genuinely believe that this is a vision for the people, by the people. It's more than a document. It's the aspirations of Bramtonians. I genuinely want to thank our community and the staff who helped us for their time and the passion that they shared with us for the future of their city. That concludes the portion of what I'd like to say this evening, and it's my privilege to introduce special advisor to the city of Brampton, founding principal of Larry Beasley &amp; Associates, and professor at the University of British Columbia, Mr. Larry Beasley.
So before you begin, Larry, I just wanted to say, I understand that copies of your slides were distributed at the start of this special meeting, and they will be published online after tonight's meeting for public access and reference. So just so in case you wanted to see the slides afterwards, they will be available. Welcome, it's nice to see you. How many hours later from our walk?
From our walk this morning, yes.
Nice to you.
Thank you, your worship, members of council, and ladies and gentlemen. I'm very happy to be here after a year's work and nine months of particularly hard work out in the community, to go beyond the discussion of how we got the plan, the vision statement, which I should never call a plan, I'll say that reason for that in a moment, and what that statement includes. It has been for us, my partner in Beasley &amp; Associates, Sandy Logan, who is right here, and myself, to work with an extraordinary team of people here in Brampton. You have enabled not only a great team, but a team that has now gone through a process and learned a lot of techniques, which you can see is now in their very way of doing business, and I think it's going to be of great benefit to you. Antonetta Manicello has been an excellent leader, a very inspiring leader in this process, but in addition to her and her immediate team, there was also a larger core team of staff from many different departments that were involved, and throughout the process, we also had the benefit of the senior management team here at the city under Harry's leadership, and always Harry egging us on, insisting that we be as innovative as we could be, because he said that that was your expectation, that this would be a pace-setting vision statement for this city as it really should be. This is a teaser slide. This is a slide of what an artist has shown us that Bramley could look like in the future. It's an important slide, because in a way, this report, this presentation tonight, is taken directly from the report, and so the images that you see tonight are available in the report. Many of those images are very detailed plans. I know, because I've spoken to some people here tonight who've looked and said, "My house is here, and what's going to happen to that?" And I want you to know that we hope that everyone here will take the report and will deal in a lot more detail with those plans, so it is taken directly from the report. This is a teaser, though, because in a way, this is telling you an image of what a vision really is. A vision is just a sketch of the future that tells you the nature of the future. A vision is really a dream of what a community decides that it wants to be over a period of time that goes beyond the normal thinking of any council and any community. A vision goes beyond the things that are obvious. Often, it goes beyond the things that are even felt possible. It tries to say, at the best possible way, what the future should be about. This should be a statement, and I hope it is seen as a statement, an image of aspiration for this community, of what this city needs to be like over the next quarter century. We call it the Quarter Century Agenda. We believe it is urgent for Brampton, because in fact, you are growing very fast. You are growing into a big city, and your future will be at risk, as other cities have been at risk, if you do not find a clear way and direction to grow. But equally importantly, that you maximize the implications of that growth to make an optimum city for your people in the future, a city that fulfills them economically, socially, in every respect. It is, though, a vision that does have its feet on the ground, because it has been built from a solid foundation of work that is going on here at City Hall. We have noticed through the evaluation that we've done over the last year or so, that you have people in many departments doing very forward work, very progressive work on many fronts, and we have incorporated that work. That has been a starting point for us, because every single time, we found excellent work that was for us state-of-the-art, and so we said, "That's great, that's a starting point." But this vision does go beyond that framework. It tries to take you further. It tries to go to some areas that haven't yet been talked about, and to look at your city in a way that hasn't been talked about. It is a game plan for the future, and it's very important that it be clear, that it be obvious, that it be understandable, which means that by the same token, sometimes it looks too complete. It looks like these are plans that you can take to the bank. They are not, but we wanted to give you as clear a vision as we can. I have to really emphasize, though, that it is only a game plan. It is not a set of moves that you can take to immediate implementation right now. It's not a plan. It's not a policy. It's not even a strategy. It's upstream from that. It's a direction to grow, and every one of its propositions needs to have a much more fulsome analysis. It needs more public input. It needs consideration of all the prudent things that you, as a council, insist every time on any move that you would make a decision about, that has to do with funding, and timing, and partners, and enabling powers, and priorities, and all the things that are the day-to-day work of this council. Each proposition needs a full work program, and as that unfolds, each of these ideas is going to change. Why? Because you're going to involve even more people. They're going to bring more specificity. It's going to be more tailored to your specific needs, and it's going to include more ideas. Some people have said to us, "Well, that plan, I don't like that aspect or this aspect." What I say to you is you must be a part of the next process that will actually take that drawing and turn it into a real plan, and when that happens, those things you're concerned about will be dealt with. So these are just drawings. They are just artists' interpretations. Some people have said, "Well, I would call it this," or "I would call it that," I would use other words. And I say back, "Yes, you need to be involved in that process moving forward, and yes, maybe these words, these titles do need to change, and you'll determine that." But this plan had to be a bigger picture, a total picture, and it had to just settle on some images and on some words that tried to tell you a way to grow that was different than perhaps you would have grown just naturally, or maybe different than you might have grown if you did not have this overall view of the world. We have tried to make this a clear vision statement. We've tried to give it a strong, passionate concept, and the reason for that was that that's what we heard from the people that we were dealing with. So you need to look at this plan holistically. You need to look at all of it together. I commend to you, don't take it apart, one bit here, maybe one bit there, because everything is interwoven with everything else. But we have tried to structure it in a simple way, so there are seven overall vision statements, basic directions. From those, to show how you might operationalize those are 28 specific actions that we have called catalytic actions, because we know, either we heard them from your residents or we know from other work, that they will lead to change happening in a significant way. And then we've proposed over 30 different organizational moves to bring the community, to bring your business community, and to bring other people, and to collaborate with other parts of the region, and other municipalities, and other governments, to do things in a way that you can ensure that they will continue over a long period of time. From the beginning, as we talked to citizens, people kept saying to us, not only their ideas, but they kept saying these words. "I hope when Brampton does this, it does it this way." And they would tell us a way. They would talk about the way government business is done, and the kind of things that are important at an ethical level almost for the work to unfold, to build this new vision, this new idea of the future. And so we summarized those into what we call five lenses for implementation, a kind of a checklist that you can use as the staff come back with their individual work programs to say, "Yes, it does do these things." And if you do that, I can say very confidently, you will be at the cutting edge of the way local government is trying to work with its citizens, with its business community, and with its partners in building cities in the future. And then underneath all of that were four, what we call statements of the DNA of this future city, because citizens kept saying to us some things that, no matter what we would say, they would say, "My goodness, no, that goes here and here and here." And we said, "You're right." And so there's a DNA to this whole thing, and there are four things: sustainability, livability, diversity, and health. So everything that you read, you need to look at it, and you'll see those dimensions of it in the document. Your staff have made a recommendation, and I too, on behalf of our team and the community, make a recommendation. It is that this vision be endorsed. It is not that this vision be approved. It is not that this vision be the end. This vision is the beginning of the process that you need to go through, so we're asking you to endorse it, and the stronger you endorse it, the more mandate you give to this community to make it happen with this government over the next 25 years. And as you endorse it, then your staff have also said in a second recommendation to you, "We will come back with an implementation strategy." That's not our business. That's Harry's business and the whole staff's business, and they will come back with a very specific way to move this forward in an intelligent strategy. Antonetta did give you the details of engagement, but I put this slide in for one basic reason, and that is that I can tell you, because I work all over the world, that this is a process that is defensible against all comers. This process has been an excellent process, a people-based process, a public process, and it compares favorably with any process that I've been involved with in 42 years. So I wanted you to know that, and that's a commendation to your staff, but more importantly, it's a commendation to the citizens who are here and the thousands of other citizens who participated, because we call it the People's Vision, because it came directly from the people. It was the hardest synthesis I've ever done in my personal life, to take 11,000 ideas and get it into less than 100 pages, but it did come from the people, and we're very, very proud of that. Everything did kind of come down to one statement. It's a long statement, and people who know something about these statements will probably say it's too long, but it was this statement, and I want to read it to you. "The essence of Brampton is diversity, and the essence of what the people want for the future is that their city be arranged, governed, seen, and celebrated as a mosaic of people, places, and endeavors of all kinds, coexisting in harmony." I heard it over and over again from people. It was a kind of an underlying wish, an underlying expectation. So living the mosaic in 2040 is the central and very simple aspiration of the people of Brampton, certainly of the people, the thousands that were involved with us. So that's the overview. I talked about those lenses, so I very quickly want to come back to them as a kind of evaluator to the specific actions. We say here, and it is true, the city that you have is the result of how you organized yourself to make a city, and so it's very key not to just give you ideas for the future city, but to tell you how we think they're best realized. And we have five of those lenses. Very quickly, here they are. Lens number one is public engagement. This process itself, I think, illustrates vividly that when you engage your community, they will come out in droves, and they will own the result. And I'm very proud of the fact that this is their document, not just a consultant document flown in here from some other place. And so we're saying that citizens, as individuals, as corporate groups, interest groups, cultural groups, all be involved in a systematic way, and your staff will continue to experiment with different ways to do that, because it's hard to do that. But if you just take the model of this last nine months and apply that in the future, that becomes one of the lenses for how you come up with solutions. The second is collaboration, and we looked at this in two ways. As you become a larger city, the things that might have been the responsibility of a senior government become things that are absolutely essential to your local people and your local government, and so finding a way to very effectively collaborate with other governments, with other players is important, and then looking the other way, reaching out into the community and the great energy and leadership and wealth that's in the community to add to your energy here at City Hall is another way to collaborate, and that's why we've identified so many organizations, ways to collaborate that are being used around the world very effectively. I do want to come back on collaboration to one important concept, because it's a concept we use in the report and in the statement, in the vision, and that is this concept of institutes. People have said to me, "Well, what's an institute?" An institute, very simply, is on very prime issues that are very important to your community. You find a way for the energy and power of government to be linked with the wealth and leadership and power of the private sector jointly managed, jointly governed, to move forward and make change, not just at a City Hall, but also in the community, among the corporate side of the community, among everyone. And so when we thought something was very, very important or a great opportunity, and we didn't see a way you could collaborate together, we've proposed these institutes. There are four of them, I'll explain, and one final one is not called an institute, it's called an arts alliance, but you'll see it's very close to that same idea. The third is design. Very simply put, you must, as you move forward in the future, your people are saying that, but also best practices saying that, to begin to take command of the design of your city, and we've said that would happen not just by you taking over, but by you collaborating and co-design with the people who are building your city, and doing in a way that you offer it as a service to this community, to the development of this community, and achieving every single building, every single open space, a better quality of design, in the same way that people are looking at their glasses or their cellphones for great design, they're also looking at the city for great design, and we're saying that's an important lens. The fourth is technology, to begin to bring in the highest ideas, the best, most current ideas of technology, to use to both offset your costs, but also to do your job a lot more effectively, and so we're saying there are a lot of technology ideas that have not been applied here, but that easily should be applied here. And the final one is identity. That is to say two things. One is build the identity of Brampton in the future, not as a brand that you make up, but as a result of the kind of city you build, it will automatically have its identity, but then you have to do a great job of packaging it and communicating it, and you always have to be thinking about it as you're dealing with almost any issue, how does it affect our identity? And so we felt it was a major lens as well. So that leads us to the big part of the presentation, which is the actual vision and the actions to make it happen. And I'll go right to the first one. The first vision has to do with the environment and sustainability. In 2040, Brampton will be a mosaic of sustainable urban places, sitting within an interconnected park, green park network, with its people as environmental stewards, targeting one planet living. And we have three ideas there. The first is the first of those institutes that I talked about. It's called the Institute for Sustainable Brampton, because the biggest job you have and everyone has is not what you do, it's what every one of your citizens does as he or she lives their lives, and so you need an institution to help people understand what sustainable living is about, to model those new behaviors. Today, we Today, we saw a district energy plant. This kind of institution could help to make that a way of doing business. So you would have this public-private venture to help move the reality and the day-to-day living of sustainability into the common practices of you and your citizens. One of the most important things that we learned, and one of the most amazing treasures that you hold, is this extraordinary heritage open space system that you have been able for hook or crook to protect and to keep as such an amazing enhancement. And many, many people we talked to said, no matter what you do, make sure that you protect that. And then we noticed that Best Practice around the world is now saying that these kinds of open space systems are best when they're managed as a whole system, when they're managed so that the ecological parts work as well as the recreational parts. And so we're saying to found, put this system all together into a designated grand municipal park and nature reserve that you can then manage, and we've suggested that you manage it with your citizens in a trust. We've suggested that you bring design to it to help restoration, and we've suggested that you have a great organization to do things within that park from your citizens, self-help kinds of things. This becomes that green framework that I can tell you, most of the cities of the world would kill for, but you have to make sure that not only do you manage it and steward it, but that you also protect it for the future, for the generations that come after, and that's what the EcoPark would do. Here's an image of that EcoPark. This is only a first image. It doesn't try to take the place of other conservation efforts. It says Brampton will control its green network. This is what it might look like within the context of other development. And then a simple thing that just came overwhelmingly from your citizens, which was, we're losing the green canopy of our city. And so we're proposing that you plant at least a million trees over the next period of time, of this plan, in the public realm, and that hopefully you motivate your citizens to plant an equal number of trees in the private realm, and that through that you will reestablish the canopy, which is one of the great treasures that have brought people here, and you will make sure that that's there for their children and grandchildren as well. The next visionary statement is about jobs and living centers, and it is, among all the statements, the most transformative side of this story. What it says is in 2040 Brampton will be a mosaic of vibrant centers with quality jobs, a rich range of activities, and integrated living. And there's a couple of moves that will help to make that happen, and they are very catalytic moves. The one is to found a completely new uptown. You know where it's at. It's in the vicinity of Powerade and Shopper's World, brought all together into a large uptown concept. It is a concept that would work together with your downtown. They would reinforce one another, they would be tied together by transit. I'll talk about that in a moment. But together, they offer to the world the best possible setting for business, for community activity, and for the joys of modern urban living. And in some cases, you need a heritage context, which I'll talk about in a minute. In other cases, you need state-of-the-art, modern, this is it, this is with it, this is every great company in the world, not just one of them, not just 10 of them, but hundreds of them are going to want to come if you develop this in the right way. So we're suggesting that you give it its own authority for management. We're suggesting that you have a strong management group, probably within your economic development group here at City Hall, and we're suggesting you give it great design. We're even suggesting that you have a world design competition to really get the best ideas on the table. And here's a first sketch of what a few people did in a few days for what this might look like. Two major anchors, the east and the west, with all kinds of jobs and living and exhibition space and art space, and all of it tied together by a magnificent new central park that would give the rest, but that this kind of density intensification requires. Here's what it might look like. Now, we have heard a reaction of some people who've said, wow, this is a lot of towers, this is feeling a little bit too much like Toronto. And I would say back, yes, you design it the way you want. I took one neighborhood in Vancouver, very tall towers, I achieved the same density with mid-rise buildings. You might well design to do that. That's the job of these people and these people, as you work in the future to do the detailed design of this new core for your city. We also feel, though, that the downtown of Brampton is absolutely essential to the future of this place, and we have to find a way to unlock the great potential that is here. We're saying that this, and because of the extraordinary decision by Ryerson to come here, the already good luck of having the hospital here and having a great heritage setting, that you can draw a certain kind of business here that would enjoy that setting, and you can create an advanced hub for arts and for education and for life sciences, and that would beautifully complement the uptown of other businesses, and it would be a perfect setting, a perfect set of uses in a heritage district. These are uses that would enjoy a heritage district. And it would also have its own management authority, its own design assistance, and its own community organization. You have a strong set of community organizations already that are there in a nascent way. We're saying bring them together into a great force, a great community force to make this happen. Here's what it might look like in a plan, again, that people did in a few days. Here's what it might look like in an image, again, just done in a few days. That's not enough, though. You also need to take jobs, and one of your counselors said this to me very specifically, in fact, a couple of you did, take jobs out in the community itself. And so we're suggesting the formation of five town centers that are out in a constellation around the core city that will be developed over the next 25 years. These will be dense, mixed-use places, much smaller scale, probably much lower rents, which will appeal to a lot of business, but they will bring the jobs right to people, and people will be able to live very close to those jobs. Here's what those centers might look like. The ones in the north will probably happen sooner than the ones in the south. We're planning again for 25 years or more, but in the end, you would have a constellation of jobs very close to housing within communities. We've also said you have this huge logistics area, and it needs some support services. It needs something for the citizens and the workers who are there. There's very little for those people when they go to work, so of course, they get in their cars and they go somewhere else in their lunch hours and otherwise. Let's try to work with those landowners and others, with your staff, and find some locations where you could have ancillary centers in those industrial and logistics areas. Here are three locations that were tentatively identified, and they may or may not be right, because you have to find them in an opportunistic way with the landowners that are there. But even if you do a great plan, even if you have the kind of centers that we've talked about, you don't have a guarantee that you're going to get the right kind of jobs and the number of jobs in order to do what is absolutely essential in this plan, which is to shift the number or the percentage of residents' jobs here in Brampton to at least 60%. And so we're suggesting another institute, which would bring not only the great prowess of your economic development office, they have a plan coming forward, we've reviewed that plan, it is state-of-the-art, it is a good plan, but it would put them together with the Board of Trade and all of the other business institutions, and have an outreach that can reach any company of any merit in the world, can decide where those clusters are, exactly what works, and go out and really hustle those and bring them to this city. And we believe that needs to be at the level of one of these institutes, and we know from experience elsewhere that these kind of facilities and these kind of organizations really can draw jobs that are hard to get and businesses that are hard to get by the traditional techniques. The other side of this vision is more, it's more conserving. The reason for that is that your citizens told us that one of the things that brought them here was that there are great communities here, there are great neighborhoods here, that people came here because this was a nice place to live. And then they said to us, well, you know, times are changing, and sometimes the area we thought was a great place to live isn't got everything that we thought it should. And so we said, we have to make neighborhoods, strong neighborhoods, a strong feature of the future of this city. In 2040 Brampton will be a mosaic of characterful and complete neighborhoods. We start by looking at your existing neighborhoods. They're in various states of completeness, they're very livable, very lovely, but we say systematically, with City Hall and local people, do an audit of each of these neighborhoods and determine what's missing, and then over a period of time, you can augment that. We have found in our work around the world that every couple of generations, a neighborhood needs to be refreshed to prepare it to be good for another couple of generations. In fact, in our country, we lost track of that back in the 70s, and we almost lost our neighborhoods before we finally got smart enough to revitalize them. So this neighborhood audit is a very good way to go. One person even said to me, could I start this audit tomorrow? And we said, yes, you can. It should be possible to very quickly put together a kit that would allow citizens to start their audit, but it'll even be better when City Hall is helping them and bringing those answers right to this council chamber for propositions for change. Here was one neighborhood concept that people worked on for a couple of days, and you begin to see the kind of interventions that are not those that would destructure or destabilize the neighborhood. They're rather using lands that are excess and available to make the neighborhood complete from every angle. You also have a lot of green space, green areas left that you know are going to develop. So we're saying to you, every one of these new neighborhoods has to be a model for complete neighborhoods in the future. You have to be showing Greater Toronto what great neighborhood building is about. So we're suggesting that you offer a co-design service with those who are putting together new neighborhoods, the owners and their design teams, work with them in co-design in a studio setting to design those places together to meet all their business needs, but also to meet all your public needs. I've done co-design for years. It's a highly, highly productive way to ensure that you get all the things you need for a city, as well as fulfill the business objectives that are also there. So this co-design for greenfield areas would start with some overall structuring of those areas, so you know where neighborhoods will be, and then work with the various landowners to achieve those, also bringing in citizens who are living nearby so that they'll be a part of that. Here's one neighborhood that people started to sketch out and what it might look like in the future. This is not a plan, but it is the idea of a more complete neighborhood that would meet the scrutiny of anyone coming to look at the nature of design of this neighborhood. And then we came to Bramley. And Bramley is, was, in its time, the model in this part of the world for very contemporary living. It has stood the test of time. People love this neighborhood, they want it to be refreshed. By the same token, the shopping center developer is ready to redevelop, wants to work with the city and others to make sure that it's done in a right way. And so we're saying update and revitalize this community as a model, also for the next generation of comfortable, sustainable living. And we're saying do that with a design team, do that with the citizens of that area, and do that with the landowners of that area as well. And we've given a lot of different ideas. Here's an image of what was put together in a couple of days. It might look something like this, it might have a lower scale. What a lot of people did say, it had to have a lot more streetscape and a lot more integrity of the built form and a lot more diversity of the housing, but the basic principles of this are very elegant principles, and those should be protected. A new idea that came from a lot of people was to take Queen Street and turn it into a place of what we call the boulevard lifestyle. The boulevard lifestyle is where you live upstairs, you work maybe in the same building or just down the street, you go down for lunch and dinner and all your fun things right on the street, right on the sidewalk, you have access with transit to get to other places you want to go. It's got coherence, it's got identity, it's a great place. And so we're saying you should create an area that is east of the downtown and west of the freeway, and you should identify which of those blocks are the key blocks, and you should create the Queen's Boulevard for a very elegant, contemporary boulevard lifestyle. And here's what it might look like as it's built out. This is an energetic place, this is a hip place, this is a stylish place, this is a place that has all the things that you go to any city to have, to be experienced and to be a part of your day-to-day life. That moves us to transportation, always a big story, a big interest in a community like Brampton. In 2040 Brampton will be a mosaic of safe, integrated transportation choices and new modes, contributing to civic sustainability and emphasizing walking, cycling, and transit. We have eight different moves here. Obviously, it's about transportation, obviously, that's a big issue, you all know that, and it's led to eight important catalytic moves. The first is to declare this council and this city's interest in active mobility, in shifting the accommodation for more walking, more cycling, and of course, more connections to transit. The second is to complete many of your streets in a much more complete way, in a much more finished way, a much more humane way, a way that would allow them to be used for many purposes, not every street, but many streets. And in fact, your staff are already working on a complete street model or template, which we were thrilled about, and we've said, make that a major way that you look at your streets in the foreseeable future. Here's an image that we took from your own staff work of what these places might look like as you start to identify where could those streets happen and how could they happen, working with the people who live on them and near them. We're saying an integrated transit network. Obviously, that's something that would be included in a vision, taking the various transit accommodations that are already here, building those out particularly to now connect your cores and your town centers and your other focal points into a complete, integrated system. And we're saying to develop a new transit line. And this was our concept for how would you best connect the new uptown with the existing downtown. You have already gone through a discussion about the main street connection. That may have viability, it's not something that should ever be off the table, but we started looking at how could you actually make transit a catalytic move by connecting to more of the developable sites that are in both sides of this equation than just a few sites. And we noticed that on McLaughlin, there are some amazing large sites, then on Kennedy, there are extraordinary developable sites, and of course, south, there is all of the sites that I've talked about in uptown. And so we said, if you had a figure eight, that would be a way to connect it all together. And it's essential, because the last thing you want is to start to have downtown and uptown in a competition. The only reason, way you can avoid that is they get so connected that they help one another, they're integrated with one another. Now, I'll tell you from experience in many different places, and I'm on the transit board of my own city, that transit investment is opportunistic. It happens when people agree with it, when governments agree with it, and when money's available. And if you find an opportunity for that, and it has an alignment that maybe is slightly different from what we've shown in this plan, I would say your first objective is to connect uptown and downtown however you can, but I don't think you would give up ever the figure eight idea in the longer-term future, because that's how you get to all the sites that really need to develop, that will not be engendered for development unless they have good transit accessibility. And so we say there are not one or two choices, you choose one and forget the other. You should be shooting for all the transit you can get, in all the modes you can get, because in the future, once autonomous driving comes, the big competition is going to be between transit and autonomous driving. It's not going to be between autonomous driving and bicycles or autonomous driving and other kind of cars, and you want to make sure transit is very, very accessible and a very good competitor with that. Here's what that figure eight might look like. It does connect most of the development sites that we could identify. In the north, it connects to GO, it puts the entire system connected to the GO system in the north. It connects to all the key sites in the downtown, it connects to all the key sites in the uptown. It gives you an opportunity to link over to the airport from the Powerade site, and it gives you the opportunity, of course, to go down Queen Street. The net effect is a system that starts to pull all of your important areas together into one good system that will be an extraordinary magnet for jobs and development and for business, as well as nice places to live. Another thing that came very much out of the whole process was free transit. That may have been a misnomer. It's really meant to be, you don't pay a fare. Not that it's free. You and I know that transit is never going to be free. It's an expensive proposition. But so many of your citizens noticed that with autonomous driving coming and with the need to really shift people's inclination to move toward transit, the best way is to increasingly, over a number of years, make it free. Maybe you make it free on your most important routes. Maybe you make it free for your most, the people who have least access to the system. You have to decide how to do that. But, but those citizens, I think, were very forward-looking in saying that cities of the future are going to see transit as a basic right and a basic utility. And that means it's going to be free. There are a few cities in the world, in Germany and elsewhere, that have done this. Not many cities have done it. You'll see that we're saying, even here, we're being reticent. We're saying that we need, you need to sponsor and host a region-wide inquiry about the potentials of this and what are those alternative sources to pay for transit, which we all know is expensive. But this, to me, is one of the most forward visions of your citizens. Those citizens are ahead of most transportation planners in this country to determine that we have to find a fundamental way to make transit more competitive, and that's the way to do it. A lot of your citizens did say, however, we'll still be in our cars. And this vision is not an anti-car vision. I want you to know that. We know that private cars and ultimately autonomous driving is going to be on your streets for the foreseeable future, but you have to manage it better. There are much more advanced techniques of management, including high technology, that will allow you to take an increasingly constrained street system for cars and use it more and more effectively. And so obviously, because we're not trying to create a downtown kind of vision here, but a vision appropriate to this suburban community, let's accommodate the car as one of the modes, but let's accommodate it fairly and as well as we can. We are saying that you need to take command of these new travel technologies that are coming on the scene. Some people will say that'll be dealt with by the province or by the federal government. But we are on the verge of these things being brought into your community within days or weeks or months. And I believe every council in the country, and so do many of your citizens, believe that you have to take control of that. Where are you going to accommodate those new technologies? That has to do with self-driving. It has to do with shared driving. It has to do with sustainable proportion. It has to do with digital network supports. And it has to do with new devices for moving around. How are you going to accommodate that? What are you going to have in your community or not? We're saying get ahead of your country, get ahead of your province, and be the people who define what makes sense for this community and consequently, I think will make sense for most of the suburbs around the country. And then the final thing is advanced goods movement management. You are a logistics center. You are going to be a logistic center for the foreseeable future. The way that goods movement is managed right now is putting a lot of things together that are somewhat intrusive with one another. You now want to create major centers of pedestrians and walkability and that. So we're saying go into a process of looking at your goods movement system and how best that it can be operationalized so that you get the goods movement you need, but also protect the areas you need to protect. Now, your, the region appeal has a very, a very contemporary goods movement strategy recently completed. We think that was a good strategy, but we think it needs to be taken further. In some cities, we're seeing in parts of the world where trucks are now on their own right-of-way. We're even seeing people talking about goods transit. These are the things you need to talk about because you are one of the great logistics centers of the region. You need to be ahead of other cities on this question. That brings me to two other vision statements, which I'm going to read together because they are so intertwined in how they should be dealt with. The first has to do with social matters and housing. In 2040, Brampton will be a rich mosaic of cultures and lifestyles coexisting with social responsibility, respect, enjoyment, and justice. And then Vision Six, health. In 2040, Brampton will be a mosaic of healthy citizens enjoying physical and mental wellness, fitness, and sports. The reason I put them together is because, number one, these are issues that are very often supported by senior governments. Policies are set by senior governments, regional governments, and provincial governments. So they are all the kinds of things, whether it's social, housing, or health, that you are a major partner. You need to be a major collaborator. So we're suggesting that you position yourself to understand more than anyone else all the issues on all three of these fronts that matter for your citizens, that are particularly hurting your citizens, and that you become a much better position to be a partner, to be a collaborator. But there's a second reason. And that is, on each one of these fronts, there are many, many things that you can do by yourself with your authority as a city. Housing, for example. The diversification of the kind of housing you accommodate, accommodating extended families, accommodating two or three units on a property, other densities, other different approaches to housing, small homes. There are many kind of housing issues that are in your authority. And when you deal with those, you become very credible when you deal on the matters of collaboration with the other governments that you're dealing with. And so that's true. And because that's true, we're suggesting on the social side that you adopt a Brampton-made social development framework. We're saying on the housing side that you adopt a comprehensive housing strategy that can be both collaborative with other governments and your own action. And that you adopt a Brampton-made help-support framework for those partnerships you're doing with other people. And because it is so important and came up so often from the people around this room and outside in this community, we're saying you need a completely new department to do with, to deal with that over time. And we're saying to you, these are the issues that as you become a bigger city, they become more and more defining. You can't just have an initiative here and maybe think about it there and hope some other government will help you there. You need your own program. And your citizens will expect it and your town will be branded by it. And so we're saying bring that right into your government as a primary action. In addition, on the social side, your community had this great idea, which we embraced and which I'm now using in three or four other cities that I'm working in, called social hubs. These are not big new institutions. These are small installations that will be motivated by private energy and private activity by citizens in different communities. Will probably use some space in your community centers or maybe a school, or maybe there'll be a private space someone will donate, where in fact, the health authorities, the social, your social programs and other things can be delivered in a way that's suitable for each individual neighborhood. We do believe, and your community told us constantly, that the thing that sets you apart from many parts of our country as a suburb is your extraordinary cultural diversity. We've seen all kinds of different cultural sub-communities here. We've heard from all kinds of people. It has been an amazing learning experience for us about the richness of people, not just recent immigrants, ladies and gentlemen, people that have been here two and three and four generations, who feel pride with their home culture and who would like to have it a part of their city. We don't think in Brampton, as in most parts of our country, that this incredible diversity is being expressed the way it should be, nor do we think that it's being utilized to reach out in an economic way to the entire world around you. And so we're suggesting that you form an institute. One, again, one of those major moves, an institute of public and private activity together to begin to make many kinds of moves. And we are saying in addition that your first of those initiatives, once that institute is set up, is to work with your South Asian community because this is the one community that is ready to be expressing itself more richly in this community and is ready to see many more economic linkages made throughout the world. And this is a good way to start. And it is a way that goes beyond government and it puts it in the hands of the very people who would enjoy and benefit from this kind of initiative. We also found something fascinating, which is you punch way above your weight when it comes to athletics and athletes. You have a lot of people that go on to, to professional athletics. But right now, they're pretty much leaving your city as they are, quote unquote, as it was put to me, carded, which means that they've been identified as potential professional athletes. So we're saying form an institute to begin to put in place the infrastructure right here so that those athletes stay here. And in fact, that kind of infrastructure comes to this community so that you in the future would be known as the place, not only that generates athletes, but that hosts athletes and hosts better, more comprehensive athletics. And with all of that will come all of the facilities that you need. And we think the best way to start that is with this institute, this public and private joint venture. The last of the visions is, has to do with arts and culture. In 2040, Brampton will support a mosaic of artistic expression and production. We discovered here an incredible subculture of artists. Some are struggling. Some are very successful. Some are making a living. Some are hoping to make a living. But right now, it's all dispersed. Right now, there is no strong organizing force. And so we recommend two things. One is what we call the Brampton Arts Alliance. This is where you take those artistic talents and you put them together with venture capital and you turn avocations into vocations. You turn something I'm interested in and I'm good at into a career. When you add that, you've got a great community of digital artists, for example. If you add capital to that, you will create digital companies. And those are the kind of companies that are absolutely appealing around the world today. You just need to put your, your economic energy together with your cultural energy. And so this alliance would do that. You've had some sort of alliances like this in the past. They haven't been much smaller, much more intimate. This one needs to be a grand affair. This idea came directly from people in the community. I'm in love with this idea and I haven't seen it anywhere in the world. It's called an arts street. Now, you've seen a place where someone took a warehouse and they turn it into an arts facility or an old city building or something. This would take an entire two or three or four blocks on a street. It would line it with all kinds of artistic activities. It would, it would absolutely identify Brampton with that kind of art, production and support and hosting. It would have all kinds of creative maker activity going on, sales activity going on. It would take the work of the alliance and bring it to the street. And it would create a place that would give you a brand in the arts world and with an art scene that would be unlike any I've ever seen. And so we thought this was a great idea and especially if you could put it together with sponsorship from one thing you have a lot of, which are big retailers. And if you could put those things together, you might have a very amazing result. Now, here is a first image of what that might look like. This is highly conceptual. This is one of those things you can't find an image because no one's done it before. And we think it could be an amazing thing. And it was a very strong idea that came out of the arts community here in Brampton. Now, I'm not going to spend much time on this, but I do want you to know that we have double-checked these images and these ideas against the basic growth projections that you have, have projected in the city. We know as a minimum that these concepts, these plans, these schemes can accommodate the level of growth that you are expecting. We believe these drawings, these ideas will go well beyond the 25 years. Gives you a lot of growth potential. It may be even up to 35 or 40 years and certainly will allow you to achieve that shift of jobs to 60% local jobs. Putting it all together does reinvent Brampton and make it a new kind of place. This is a good image of that. I show it to you for two reasons. One is you begin to see in the landscape the important places in your city that can compete with any place in the region and the province. But the other thing you see is a lot of the city that is protected, is conserved, is kept, as a beautiful communities that the people of Brampton love so much. We believe there are 10 transformations that will come automatically from this vision. You will draw a host of all kinds of jobs to these new hearts that you're creating. They will be jobs within your community. You will have complete living where people can live and work and, and play and enjoy themselves very close together without the need to always be hopping in their car. You will have a thriving art scene. Everything will be connected in the way that will be a basic expectation of citizens 25 years from now. Beauty will be brought back to this community. Nature will be brought back to this community. And the social and health harmony will be something high on your agenda that everyone will say, I need to go to Brampton because they care about these kind of things. You will have community organizations to act and also to drive forward the vision. But no matter which council is here or there, that's a great thing. But you'll have communities also driving these ideas. And you'll have a very smart way to govern. And that'll lead to this teaser, something like what the new uptown might look like when actually built. A place that frankly, you can't wait to get to. Thank you very much.
So thank, excuse me, thank you, Larry, very much. Clearly, this is a work of passion. Thank you very much. Everybody, we agreed we would hear public delegations next before council's turn for questions and consideration of the report. You may speak after we've heard from the last delegation, but you may hear something in the next 23 delegations that we currently have on our calendar. And I would ask council if we could vary the order of the speakers. We actually have two young people here tonight, two children, who I believe tomorrow is a school day. So we would like to make sure they get to school so perhaps they can come work on this plan someday in the future. So is council willing to vary the order so the two young people can speak first? Okay. So our first delegation is Josiah Sedia. Is Josiah here? He's delegation number 13, I think. Is it even high? Do you want to sit down here and then we can have the microphone? Or is that tall enough?
So before Josiah gets going, can I just give everybody the heads up about how this is going to work? So for all public delegations, you're going to be given up to five minutes to speak. That's to ensure that everyone who wants to speak gets a chance to address council. The clock will be running in front of you at the podium to let you know how much time you've used. When you do come forward, if you could please state your name for the records because it's a public meeting record. And we're going to start with the people who'd contacted the clerk's office before and immediately after the agenda was published, followed by persons who've requested to speak this evening by contacting clerk's office staff before the meeting or during the town hall sessions downstairs. As I said, we have 23 speakers and right now, we'll be here for two hours. So make yourself comfortable. Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Josiah and I'm seven years old. Using Lego, I built an electric bus because it doesn't use gas and safer for us and our trees. trees. We need this in Brampton because there are too many cars and too much traffic. I went to Brampton Transit for a tour and I went for a bus ride and we took the bus for a wash and it was fun. Also Alex gave me a bag with lots of cool stuff. Thank you.
Is that it Josiah?
Yes.
Thank you very much. One of the best delegations so far. Okay, our next speaker is Anjit Yoli. Have I said that right?
No, it's Nuj.
Sorry. I apologize.
No, I'm good.
Welcome.
Does it bend? Ah. Albert Einstein once said, "In the middle of difficulty lies an opportunity." Prestigious council members and honorable guests, my name is Nuj and I'm honored to speak here today. Today I'll be sharing my marvelous experience over the past year. Over the past year, I've had many incredible opportunities. It all started one mind blowing evening of the Diwali weekend at Bramley City Center, where there are many booths set up and one of them was the City of Brampton's booth, where you could draw what you think Brampton's future is going to be like. A few weeks later, my family got an email saying that my drawing was selected in the top 10. I was invited to an event to see the vision of Brampton's future. At that event, I gave a speech on how we should start using renewable energy. My passion is using renewable energy and technology for better development of Brampton. Renewable energy is a power that will change all Bramptonians' lives. We shouldn't be living in a polluted area. Instead, we should have a peaceful environment. After my speech, the CEO, Mr. Harry, came up to me and said that had a phenomenal speech and he invited me for an interview with him. At that interview, I highlighted many key points on how technology can play a major role in Brampton's future. Brampton is a prosperous city that is growing constantly. Being in a multicultural country lets us to be different. We have cars polluting our environment. With the help of technology, we can start promoting many electric and solar cars. So our roads and communities will be nature friendly. If we look 30 to 40 years in the future, we might even forbid cars and find new ways of transportation. With today's technology, we can make this an amazing city into a city of the future. The City of Brampton has also proposed plans for 2040, which is the Mosaic project. This is the start to making Brampton an astonishing city. With this outline, everything will be connected from bike paths to even transit routes. This project will make a major difference in Brampton's population. More citizens will expand the number of schools and businesses. People, to conclude this project, this project will make Brampton a spectacular, phenomenal and an amazing project. You might think that I'm going a little ahead of myself, but trust me, by using technologies, Brampton can be one of the best multicultural and diverse countries cities to live in. Okay, so one April afternoon, an email came to my parents saying that on May 7th, the final step will be made by Brampton's council members. They also mentioned that it would be astonishing if I spoke here today and how I've contributed to a project and how it will help us. So I took the opportunity and here I am speaking in front of you, all honorable people. My future goal is to become a businessman, to serve the community in whatever capacity I can. To end my speech, I really want to say this past year has become one of the greatest years and full of so many wonderful opportunities. Thank you so much for listening to my speech and I hope this convinced everyone a little more that Brampton can really have a successful future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have a feeling we're going to hear from this young man someday in the future. So our next speaker is Mr. Chris Boehner, co-chair Citizens for a Better Brampton.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. As you know, my name is Chris Boehner and I'm co-chair for Citizens for a Better Brampton. Thank you Larry. I would like to begin by saying it was a great pleasure and honor to have been invited to participate in the future ready vision for Brampton. I would like to personally thank Larry Beasley and his team for nurturing and inspiring us to help achieve something that our city has yearned for a long time. A vision for our city that I believe is unique, a vision that will garner the attention of all levels of government, but most importantly, a vision that can unite this council, our staff, our business leaders and our residents. It's a vision that we can all be proud of. After all, this document is a creation from the dreams and aspirations of our residents and stakeholders of our great city. It's how we see Brampton evolving and emerging as a leading city within the GTA. I believe tonight is truly a special night, a night that marks a turning point in our history, a night where we symbolically turn the page and move forward with a bold and transformational blueprint for Brampton. A blueprint that shows us how we can add all those new businesses, all those new jobs, all those new residents, and make it all make sense and make it all work. It shows us how we can enhance and protect our green spaces, encourage an environmentally focused approach to design and planning, so we create healthy, vibrant and welcoming streets and neighborhoods. It shows us how we're going to move our residents around the new vibrant and diverse urban centers with a much more comprehensive transit plan for our city. In fact, many who participated in this process mentioned on several occasions that Brampton's rejection of the Main Street LRT alignment helped open the possibility for so much more. More transit infrastructure that helps define new areas for development and intensification that will allow Brampton to grow and prosper. A transit plan that serves the needs of Canada's ninth largest city, a plan that does not shortchange our city as before. It shows us that there are areas for growth and intensification, yet preserving or enhancing our green spaces and parks. It shows us that preserving our distinct heritage is important as we grow into a modern and technology driven city. This is a plan that I believe will finally put Brampton on the GTA map, a plan that gets Brampton the attention we deserve, a plan that helps change the perception and opinions of our city. It's time for our mayor, our members of council, to unite this evening and vote unanimously to endorse this vision. We need to send a strong and united message to all political parties that Brampton won't be taken for granted any longer, that Brampton is moving forward to assert its rightful place within the GTA with this future ready vision. Thank you.
Mr. Doug Bryden, Mr. Doug Bryden, co-chair of Citizens for a Better Brampton.
Good evening, your worship and members of council. As a member of CFBB, we have been pleased to be involved in the future visioning process that has been carried out by Larry Beasley over the last several months. We believe that because of the significant participation and input of a broad cross-section of the community, it can truly be said that this vision for the city represents and reflects the desires and wishes of the Brampton citizens, made in Brampton for people who live, work and play here. It is a blueprint of what the future could look like, carefully crafted and doable, but flexible enough that all its dictates are not considered straitjackets, but allow for a degree of fluidity and compromise. On balance and in general, CFBB can fairly offer our complete support for this 2040 future vision. While it does not include all of our suggestions and wishes, we believe that its direction will meet the needs of our future growth positively, economically and humanely. Specifically, one, we fully endorse the LRT loop routing, put forward as appropriate and economically viable. Two, we endorse the downtown and two sub-center concept to adequately handle the projected expansion of Brampton with the caveat that in our view, downtown must remain and develop as the center and heart of the city, celebrating and refreshing its heritage, possessing a full array of downtown uses, including seat of government, health, education, retail and eating establishments, institutional uses and related and supportive business facilities, and including residential and hotel accommodation. Skyline recognition from afar with iconic architecture can help to secure its basic importance in the growth dynamic of the city. Three, we believe that the enhancement of the Go Rail connection at the hub to downtown Toronto and to Kitchener Waterloo should be recognized as the lifeline for communication transportation that will facilitate growth of the core and beyond. Because of the importance of this infrastructural imperative already available, we do note with considerable alarm the very recent positioning of the Ryerson University complex on a significant part of the downtown transportation hub land, which has use requirements for substantial commuter parking and opportunity for multi-use commercial development. The block adjacent to the hub and south of the rail line, already assembled at George and Nelson, is in our opinion, a better choice for the university, more integrated with the existing eating and shopping facilities and closer to the innovative center across George Street. And it is not in reality affected by the downtown floodplain. Four, we are excited by the potential plans for major residential and office development at Gateway and its connection proposed for the Powerade area. Its openness allows for unfettered development, flexibility and creativity. The vision is of course not a plan. It is not meant to be static or fixed, preventing dynamic development that inevitably presents itself for council consideration from time to time, taking advantage of private sector creativity and risk assessment with the ebb and flow of markets and financial capability. We sincerely hope that this future vision for 2040 will excite not only council, not only all Bramptonians, but will excite all political levels who will dictate sufficient funding that in partnership with the private sector will allow this vision to actually happen. CFBB encourages council to confirm acceptance and endorse the future vision for 2040 tonight and let that excitement be carried into and resonate with the election atmosphere soon be upon us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Heather Strati. Our next speaker is Heather Strati, Chair of the Brampton Board of Trade. Welcome.
Thank you, everyone. I want to start by saying I recognize two very young leaders that are in our midst. So congratulations to our first two presenters. They did such an amazing job. So thank you to everyone. My name's Heather Strati, Chair of the Brampton Board of Trade. So kudos and congratulations on the Brampton 2040 vision. It was great in the workshops that we attended. Living the Mosaic is certainly a vision that we all have aspired to for many, many years. This vision allows us all to see what our city can be by 2040, an end goal to aspire to. It is aspirational and collaborative. It incorporates changes in all facets of our city, resulting in a cityscape that is thriving and exciting. Let me be, let me be very clear, the Brampton Board of Trade supports the principles of this vision. We recognize that our city needs a focus and a framework to continue moving forward, that end goal that we need to aspire to. We also recognize that the implementation of that vision will take multiple plans across multiple facets, more scrutiny and citizen engagement, and the details of those plans are definitely very much under development. In adopting this vision today, we urge city council to consider the following points as it explores strategies for implementation and execution. The economic impact on taxpayers, residential, commercial, industrial, and the jobs population activity rate ratio as well. The consultation process going forward following today's meeting and the importance of providing adequate notice and comparative analysis so that quality decisions can be made. In particular, the importance of comparative analysis on the Figure Eight Transit Loop with other more possibly affordable transit options that may better serve Brampton businesses and residents. For all infrastructure costs, consideration should be given to funding sources, business case analysis, activity rate and timing to adequately assess return on investment. Pragmatic implementation of infrastructure investment to both ensure respect for taxpayers and to minimize disruption and negative impact to residents and business. And ultimately, the alignment of the strategies with the various master plans currently under development, for example, the economic development plan and the cultural plan. The Brampton Board of Trade welcomes and respects the perspectives, ideas and proposals that were brought together in this vision. It is our belief that the considerations we mention can be addressed without delay. Please know that council can call on the Brampton Board of Trade to help ensure maximum success of this vision while also acknowledging the practical implications it brings to our community. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dale Lang, member of the Cycling Advisory Committee. Welcome.
Madam Mayor, members of council and the public and staff, I'd like to thank you very much for this opportunity to speak. I'm Dale Lang and I'm speaking on behalf of the Cycling Advisory Committee and I have some slides which will be coming up shortly. Just on a personal note, I'd like to say that I've been advocating at City Hall now for the past five years and I have to congratulate Larry and the entire team for basically hitting every single one of the buttons that we've been pushing for the last five years. Thank you. I'm still waiting for my presentation to appear. And I'd also like to say, to start with, Larry cautioned us to not be pulling apart his, his report. And you'll see in, in my slides that in fact, that looks like exactly what we've done in the, in the Cycling Advisory Committee. However, do not be concerned because we have actually endorsed every, every single time you see cycling or active transportation, I have to say we were delighted. So I'm very, it's going to allow me to go through this very quickly. And I'm not sure how to go down here, page down. Okay. So first of all, of course, cycling's the great equalizer, so of course that makes it perfect for this, this mosaic because no matter what's your age, whether you're very tiny or very, very of advanced years, you can enjoy the benefits of cycling, diverse backgrounds, doesn't matter your income level, accessibility, you can even ride trikes, commuting, recreation, cycling to school. Of course, it does work very hand in hand, the whole cycling concept with the environment and that whole idea of that connection. So it doesn't matter whether you're cycling on the road or in, through our fabulous park trails, this will be a very sustainable method of moving people. The Trees Project, oh, we love that because on a hot day, on a windy day, you just can't, you can't beat getting the respite of cycling underneath the canopy of trees. It's the best. We definitely feel that the cycling aspect of considering the whole jobs and the economic prospects for the City of Brampton are greatly enhanced by all the examples throughout North America of communities that have embraced a cycling infrastructure culture like Pittsburgh with their head office of Google, Portland, Oregon, there's many, many other fabulous examples. Really, the downtown Brampton is a perfect, a perfect marriage with the new university and a whole cycling infrastructure. And all the other town centers, of course, this is an economic driver. We've seen examples of the economics from literature from the UK where the economic advantages of having cyclists by as much as 25%. And even the, the figure that came out of the Blur Street Cycling Lane, the cyclists were spending 2.6 times more, a hundred, more than $100 a month for their purchases compared to people who are just driving through with cars. The, the whole idea of linking the, the structures of our uptown, downtown and all the town centers, this makes again, perfect sense to have, because if you look at Brampton and you look at the map, these are very easily cycleable distances. So this is a great way of, of linking this with our cycling network. And as we have all these high rises and increased population density, of course, we're not going to have room for all these, these cars. And cycling makes, makes a good way of minimizing the, the parking problems as well as the, the driving problems. And also the access to, to the logistics and we want to have all of our workers being able to, to ride their bikes to work. The whole concept of shifting to work from home to is, is perfect then to link cycling to this as well. Neighborhoods, somebody's cycling, somebody's doing this for.
It's our clerk, just so you know.
Thank you.
It's not magic.
Thank you. It's magic, yes. The whole idea The whole idea of the neighborhoods too, we need to be able to cycle to our neighborhoods and then within, within as well, and linking this, this whole idea so that, that it becomes the preferable option. And so it, it makes it naturally easy then to, to just leave the, the car behind because we have that, that possibility. And I love this, the whole idea of transportation and connectivity, yes, walking number one, absolutely, but boy, cycling was number two on that list. And so hooray for that, thank you Larry. The Active Mobility Charter, this whole Vision Zero is something that's come up time and time again.
You have 30 seconds left.
Thank you. Time and time again, the Vision Zero, and of course, that's very important. First kilometer, last kilometer, perfect link for transit. It's really critical that we have good locking bike storage. We don't want our bicycles, whether they're expensive or cheap, we don't want them stolen, and we want to be able to easily put them on the, the bike rack. And advance, oh, this is really important, that we take advantage of all these great technologies with bike counters, with lights that change so that we can cycle on through...
Your time has expired, but thank you for your presentation. We all have a copy of it, and anybody else who wants it will be able to get a copy. Thank you very much. Dr. Christopher Evans. Dr. Christopher Evans, Executive Lead, Ryerson University, Brampton Initiative, Ryerson University, is my next speaker. Welcome.
So Madam Mayor and distinguished councillors, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here tonight to speak. As the mayor said, my name is Chris Evans, and I'm at Ryerson University. So having said that, I'm delighted to bring the greetings to all of you and to the citizens of Brampton on behalf of the university, and to share with you how excited we are about the, the plan or the vision that we've just heard about this evening, the city of Brampton's new vision for the next 25 years. As a university with a particular interest and expertise in city building, we're looking forward to being a key catalyst for this new vision of Brampton. We're also thrilled to be connected to one of the fastest-growing and most diverse communities in Canada, which is also ideally located at the heart of the Toronto Waterloo Innovation Corridor. My colleagues and I at Ryerson are highly impressed with the, the vision that we've, that I've had the opportunity to hear about tonight and the privilege to hear about, and we're very excited for the potential that Ryerson has to bring both to downtown, the downtown core of Brampton as well as to the entire city. As I'm sure you're well aware, universities have an important role to play in strengthening and revitalizing their neighborhoods and their cities. Economic and social benefits result, and one need look no further than the impact of revitalizing Maple Leaf Gardens, turning Gould Street into a pedestrian-only zone, and the influence of the Ryerson Image Center that has had, the positive impacts that that's had in our downtown Toronto community. And another good example I can mention would be to refer to our DMC at Ryerson University. Established eight years ago with a small handful of startups, it is now ranked as the number one university-based incubator in the world, and it has supported over 334 startup companies, raised nearly $410 million in seed funding, and fostered the creation of over 3,200 jobs. We have ambitions, together with the city, to plan and create an innovation hub in Brampton anchored by a global center for cybersecurity. This hub will also help strengthen the regional innovation corridor that connects our cities. In closing, I would also like to share that Ryerson is honored and privileged to be part of a project that will provide much-needed access to university education for so many students closer to their homes, including perhaps some of those young people that we heard speak earlier this evening. This initiative will help, also help develop Ontario's highly skilled workforce by increasing experiential learning opportunities here in the city of Brampton. It will assist students in acquiring the essential skills and competencies that they need to thrive in the knowledge economy going forward, and encourage partnerships in high demand fields. So again, many thanks for the opportunity to speak to you all tonight. We look forward to harnessing the great partnership that we have with the city of Brampton and with Sheridan College to fulfill the potential of this historic initiative. Thank you very much.
My next speaker is Herbert Sinoc, Manager of Sustainable Energy Systems, Sheridan College. Nice to see you again.
Good to see you.
Yeah, it's part of our tour this morning.
Yes. Thanks. Can everyone hear me okay here?
Yep.
Great. Thank you. So Mayor Jeffrey, members of council, I thank you very much for the opportunity to delegate here this evening. My name's Herbert Sinoc. I'm delighted to be here tonight, both on behalf of Sheridan College and also personally, as I participated in a few of the visioning workshops that were part of this process. And first off, I'd really like to thank the leadership from the city of Brampton for engaging in this amazing process to define and redefine Brampton's future, and at the same time to congratulate the city on the extensive outreach and engagement that was undertaken during the process. This is truly a vision that Brampton can take pride in. In my day-to-day role, I'm responsible for energy and sustainability portfolio across all of the Sheridan campuses, and it's a function that in many ways is as strategic and visionary as it is tactical. And I guess in thinking about it, it's a best-kept secret that Brampton is actually home to one of the North American leaders in post-secondary energy efficiency. For example, we're in year five of about seven to implement a portfolio of projects that'll see us lower our overall energy and carbon impact by 50% by 2020. We've built district energy systems both here in the city of Brampton and in the town of Oakville, and we're engaged with each and every municipality where Sheridan has a presence to actually help guide the thinking about energy reduction, low-carbon infrastructure, and district energy. And it's really in that respect that I take keen enjoyment in being part of this process, of imagining how the Brampton community will invent its energy in future, how it will implement sustainability across a wide range of environmental, economic, and social elements. The plan really does a remarkable job of weaving all of these elements, all of these vectors and ideas into a truly compelling story for Brampton. From Sheridan's perspective, we're delighted by the vision of a vibrant and leading-edge uptown that will see many advantages for the Davis campus, especially with respect to bringing people, jobs, and connectivity to the area. And we look forward to the new possibilities this would bring to the Sheridan community, and especially to our skilled and motivated graduates who have so much to contribute to Brampton. And while I've already talked a fair bit about sustainable leadership, it's really only one of the areas where Sheridan actually brings strength to the community. The Davis campus features applied programs in health and community studies, science, technology, skilled trades, and business, which along with our incredible research centers could really help create the kind of transformation, transformation that's envisioned here. So in short, we look forward to working with the city of Brampton, our community and industry partners, all of us together, working to shape the future of this great city. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Aloha Donor, Atobico Creek Residents Association. Welcome.
Thank you.
Can somebody fix the mic?
I'll try to do that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Like you did for the kids.
Yeah.
Hello, council, Aloha Donor from Atobico Creek Residents Association. I have read the Brampton 2040 Vision document together with my neighbors, some of them. While we may not agree with everything in the document, we appreciate the time spent by staff to produce it. For the Parkland Trust and the EcoPark concept from page 23, we worry about the trust. We don't know how it will work, in contrast to what we have now. For example, the Toronto Regional Conservation Authority has a keyhole for most of the greenbelt parklands, and we know how they function. We directly advocated to the TRCA our position to the Alaric Creek route. We worry that the trust would not be responsible to concerns from the citizens because of the influence of the private sector. These are public parks. The document specifically says, quote, "this new trust that brings in business," unquote. What if business organizations or lobby group gets involved in the Parkland Trust and influences the trust for their own benefit? Given PC leaders' comments on the greenbelt where he wants to open it up to developers, we worry about influences in the Parkland Trust. Dog Ford claims to be a successful businessman and dismisses the important role of the greenbelt as just farmland. That's not responsible, and we worry his recent backtrack is not sincere. We do not want business people like that to have anything to do with our public parks. The TRCA plays an important check and balance in Brampton. Our second point is about transit. The Brampton 2040 document uses various lands, so here is ours. We want transit to be efficient, reliable, fast, and easy for transfer. Transit shouldn't be built solely for the purpose of potential future development by landowners. What's wrong with keeping in mind today's transit riders and what we need as well? Yes, new development in Brampton requires good rapid transit, but so do existing residents. That's my concern with the Figure Eight Loop on page 65. I looked at the Brampton Transit and Transportation Master Plan. Page 72, Figure 25, already shows a new Zoom line on Kennedy, but it goes further north and past Queen Street. The Brampton 2040 document does not show that. I worry about duplication between Brampton existing plans and the loop. How efficient will the Figure Eight be for a transit rider like me compared to the Kennedy Zoom route in the master plan? If someone from my neighborhood wants to walk to Main Street to take good rapid transit, but the Figure Eight Loop only puts it on Kennedy, why should they have to walk all the way over to Kennedy just to take transit that takes them back to Main Street, Main Street North, and Huron, Ontario? We don't get why it's such a controversial subject for some to have rapid transit on Kennedy and Main. Residents today take transit at Kennedy and Main already on both, and both need better transit service. In closing, here are our thoughts on uptown. We see some positives. As I age, I may have to move into a home without stairs. Uptown could be a multi-age community. However, we don't see the point in building massive new interchange ramps at the 407 and 410. Those would be expensive, and I would rather see the public funding go to better projects like transit. The university locations shown on page 35 is our final comment. As a parent, I see why many parents in Brampton want their children to attend the new Ryerson campus in Brampton, why they would want their kids to be in class as soon as possible. By putting the university at the Brampton Gold Station as the first phase, it has achieved the goal of getting classes started as soon as possible. We realize there is excitement for the Brampton 2040 document, but we will continue to provide feedback because it's our responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Rohit Sidhu, Brampton resident. Mr. Beasley, you've come in very handy. Thank you. Thank you.
I want to start off by saying how exciting all of this is, the Brampton 2040 Vision. I thank Larry especially for all his hard work in developing it. That being said, the location that we've chosen for Ryerson University on the Gould Parking Lot, I think that's a bit of a mistake. There's a perfectly, perfectly good location at Rosalia Park which can be developed and connect to the Gould Station as well. It's right down the, it's one block away. And in my mind, it should not be a 2,000-student building, it should be 20,000 students. We need to push the province for more development, more funding, and not let this become a satellite campus, which does not get any more attention from the province or universities. We need a bigger campus, and one building's just not going to cut it. And if we're focusing on cybersecurity, I also urge the city of Brampton to look into setting up an internet exchange point, and also into developing blockchain technology, which is part of that whole tech sector. And also going to the goal line, I also really appreciate the Figure Eight Loop. It is a very well thought out, very well-developed plan, and citizens of Brampton don't want any more gridlock, they don't want a Main Street route going on the surface which will back up traffic and cause more gridlock. What we need is less gridlock, more people using transit, and also the free transit vision for 2040, I think that plays a good role into it. If we subsidize transit, that's how we're going to get ridership, that's how we're going to get people out of their cars, and we also need to pressure the province into creating a comprehensive plan to connect, connect all of the GTA and the Golden Horseshoe, not just connecting parts of the GTA, but the entire GTA and the Golden Horseshoe together. Thanks.
Betty Ann Goldstein from the Sierra Peel. Is Betty Ann here?
Thank you very much, Mayor and council, for this opportunity to delegate. I'm a member of Sierra Peel, which is part of the Grow Green Network. The 2040 Vision is very exciting, it's amazing, and I'm just sorry that I probably won't be still around in 2040 to see the result. Anyway, but we are thrilled that Vision Number One is sustainability and the environment. And I ask that the creation of a task force, which is suggested, to found the Institute for Sustainable Brampton be given priority, so that every step in the implementation of the vision, every plan that is going to come out of this vision can be screened through an environmental lens. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rod Rice and Dave Capell from New Brampton. Welcome.
I don't need your help here, thank you. Madam Mayor, Dave and I are going to tag-team here a little bit.
Okay.
Thank you for the opportunity of speaking to you. Two years ago, New Brampton Community Task Force was struck by some 60 or 70 people who were desperately interested in seeing a new vision for this particular city. We longed for a cohesive and sustainable vision which would evolve out of a collaborative effort of discussion among the residents. I think that's what's happened with this particular vision. New Brampton is now 3,000 people strong, and our agenda has been and only is to see the establishment of a new Brampton. We at New Brampton know that the revitalization of the downtown core is critical to the redevelopment of a dynamic city. That's what we've sought during the last two years. And now the city has before it a future-ready vision, which has the ability to transform not only the downtown core, but also the whole city. Imagine a new Bramley, imagine a new Queen Street, imagine a new uptown. These are great things. New Brunson, New, New Brampton is honored to have been a participant in the collaborative process that the city staff have led us all throughout this whole process. And more importantly, New, New Brampton is pleased to say that we really like what we see, and if this vision is transliterated into a strategic development plan, then we foresee great things for the city.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council, staff. Boy, you guys worked hard. You know, I'm a proud man today. Like to see this vision is like, it's, I can't even explain the words I feel right now. I know staff worked extremely hard, I know council worked hard, and I'm just part of, I'm proud to be part of this city. I want to congratulate every council member in this, in this room. I want to congratulate every staff member, quite frankly, more importantly, the staff. They worked day and night. They worked hard finding a right planner, Larry Beasley. And I congratulate Larry for that, and the staff to choosing that person. Thanks to Larry for getting input for about 15,000 people. This is people's vision. This must be taken very seriously. Like, I saw people like Rob Elliot, Harry Antonetta, Paul Donato, Bob Darling. These guys worked, weekends, evenings, tirelessly. So please, don't waste this particular vision. Let's make sure this vision proceeds, let's make sure this vision continues. This is the first step for the vision. This vision is extremely important, actually, for a number of reasons. At New Brampton, we always believe in either you're part of the problem or you're part of the solution. Often politicians bring up problems, but this is you guys bringing up solutions with it. This is a solution for the problem for the city where we have 20% unemployment rate, high property taxes, below-average image, a bedroom community which needs to be, which is actually the ninth-largest city of Canada, and needs to be treated as one. Using this vision and making sure it comes to fruition is going to be extremely crucial. Our job is to ensure that this carries on, it doesn't stop like plenty of other visions have done in the past. Millions of dollars were invested, hundreds and thousands of hours of staff time was invested, it cannot be wasted. Do we like every single thing on this vision? Absolutely not. Nobody will.
You have thirty seconds.
But overall, the vision is awesome, and I think it can be worked with, and I want to congratulate against, again once, everybody in this particular room. Union construction workers would love this, floodplain people who are concerned about downtown would love this, so all the way across, it's an awesome vision. Congratulations, and thank you.
(applause). Our next speaker is Paul Vicente, Brampton resident. Welcome.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, members of council, city staff, Mr. Beasley, thank you for what you have done for Brampton today. The vision for Brampton that has been presented here tonight is bold. What the people of Brampton see for the future of our city is, in a word, breathtaking. The people of this city want their government to think bigger. Brampton can be more than a place where they just go to sleep at the end of the day. When I think about great cities, I think about the great buildings and the wonderful architecture. I think about how easy it is to get around. I think about the quality of life of the residents that are living there. Do they have jobs nearby so that they can enjoy a prosperous life? Mr. Beasley and your team have absorbed all of the wishes, the dreams, and the hopes of over 13,000 Bramtonians into one document that brings together all the ideas and best practices of urban planning that we know can make a better city. If we adopt this plan, we can end our reliance on inefficient, expensive-to-maintain urban sprawl. If we accept this vision, instead of having over 60% of Bramtonians leaving home every morning to go work somewhere else, we could have 60% of Brampton residents staying and working here. We know that reducing urban sprawl and bringing jobs to Brampton are keys to keeping taxes low. It's time we promote smart growth, and this vision presented here tonight moves us towards a better Brampton. Adopting this vision will help us to attract investment to Brampton. More business investment will balance our revenues so that residents can pay less tax. We can now offer the over 1 million residents that we are expecting here in the next 25 years, the kind of place where living is enjoyable, walkable places well-served by transit, where jobs are close by, and healthcare and education is provided. I am happy to hear that community engagement will continue to be an important part of this vision. We need a plan to engage with the residents of Brampton on an ongoing basis. They need to play a role, and most importantly, they need to know why we are doing this. Communication will always be key. For this vision to be successful, it needs the support of all of our citizens. We should establish citizens' advisory organizations and development corporations that will be responsible for each of the areas defined in this plan. By establishing partnerships between the community and organizations that know how to build, we can build this new Brampton. Great cities are built by people, one brick, one stone at a time. It begins with a vision and a plan, and then with firm resolve, we too can build a city that will serve the residents and stand the test of time. We now have this vision, and it shows us where we want to be. So we need to be determined and set ourselves on a path that will get us from where we are today to a bright and prosperous future tomorrow. Thank you very much for what you have done.
(applause). Our next speaker is Margaret Knowles, Senior Vice President, Development, Morguard Investment Limited, and Bramley City Centre. Welcome.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Madam Mayor, city councillors, residents of Brampton, thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak to you this evening. I represent Morguard, owners and managers of Bramley City Centre, and a few other properties in Brampton. We are one of the many private-sector companies that were privileged to have been actively consulted and engaged with in workshops resulting in the compelling vision, Living the Mosaic, Brampton 2040 Vision. To the mayor, to Madam Mayor and city council of the city of Brampton, and to staff and their consulting team led by Larry Beasley, and to the many residents and businesses in Brampton, all of you are key stakeholders in the future of Brampton. And so let me be very clear. We at Morguard wholeheartedly join in expressing our support for this vision and hope that this historic meeting will serve to formally launch this ambitious and worthy vision to define the future of Brampton. Some time ago, independently, Morguard itself set out to formalize a conceptual master plan for Bramley City Centre Shopping Centre with the goal to future-proof the shopping centre. And I want you to note that language because it's in my notes from two years ago, future-proof. Very defensive, not offensive, not future-ready, future-proof, because we saw what technology was bringing to our doorstep, that the changing world around us was going to change retail like never before, and the impacts were going to be tremendous, and we're going to send reverberations throughout our industry. So nevertheless, although defensive, we studied our natural environment, and that was with the aid of many of the organizations of the city and staff, and MTRCA, and MOE, and others. And we looked at our built community, we looked at our neighbors, the residences, the businesses, the government offices around us, and our overwhelming conclusion was that the future of the shopping centre lay in a program of strengthening the retail as best we could, but it was mixed use for the future, truly live-work-play, based on the fundamental principles of sustainable design and development. And I am so encouraged tonight to hear everyone talking about sustainability. The first two speakers were an impossible act to follow, but everybody talking about sustainability makes my heart just glow. So sustainable design and development as a basic fundamental, and implementing and nurturing that other aspect of sustainability which is diversity in all aspects of the plan, these two key fundamentals, we believe, would guide the creation of what we called a couple of years ago, a new community. And we dubbed it Brampton City Central because I was trying to get council's attention at the time that we were over there and that we were your eastern cornerstone of Brampton. Today, we are thrilled to see sustainability and diversity principles embraced in the Brampton Vision 2040 and embedded in the Vision's ten transformations. To Morguard, sustainability is more than building green, it's more than protection of the environment, support for public transit, it embodies social responsibility, and underscores a commitment to diversity, and the principles of human decency, mutual understanding, and respect. Brampton is already a shining beacon of this commitment in Canada. Vision 2040 cements this leading role and shines the beacon brighter. No doubt, many questions will be raised about specific aspects of Brampton 2040 Vision, but with continued consultation and collaboration, resolution of these questions will lead to greater clarity and precise implementation.
You have thirty seconds.
Be assured that Morguard and our team at Bramley City Centre stand ready to assist in this effort. We extend our best wishes, best wishes, and the expression of our highest esteem to the mayor, councillor, staff, and consulting team who authored this far-sided, bold, and brave blueprint for Brampton's future. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Andrew Jagroot, co-founder, One Brampton. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council, staff, residents of Brampton. I'd like to commend Larry Beasley and his team and the thousands of Bramtonians that have provided him input in this great vision. There are many areas of this plan which make, will make Brampton a much better city. I like the co-design idea where planners work with developers to achieve better design projects. I love the idea of creating complete neighborhoods and auditing the existing ones to decide how best to revitalize them. I love the idea of the social hubs as self-determined, self-managed community spaces. Love the idea of creating a number of arms-length institutions to manage the arts and Brampton enterprises and the cultural diversity of our city, among others. I love the Queen's Boulevard and the complete street concepts throughout the city, and the focus on several cores and the town centres to drive more local employment opportunities in our city. I'm encouraged that the city might have a vision for the first time in decades to drive development in Brampton. No longer will city planners be beholden to developers due to a lack of holistic plan. For years, and to the detriment of the city as a whole, we have watched council after council ignore the plans, sometimes ignoring staff recommendations, and convert employment lands into single-family subdivisions. And I'm going to quote from your document here for a second. On page twenty, you identify that Brampton is at risk. It is engulfing its natural landscape through sprawl, generally degrading the environment, experiencing worrisome social and health problems, not taking control of its change, and not growing a local job base or resilient economy. But overall, it's a great vision, and it's now on this council and city staff to ensure that some or all of it gets implemented. And this is very exciting, but this is only step one. It's a very high-level vision with some artist renditions and based on just a few days' work, the drawings, that is. This vision, this vision needs to translate into actionable directives from this council to staff, and it requires a council that will abide by that vision and planning documents. Great cities are walkable, have jobs for their people, have great meeting places throughout, and have iconic buildings, and we see this vision delivered through this document. So commend you, commend everyone who's involved in it. Through you, Madam Mayor, if I may, I'd like to pose four questions to Mr. Beasley with regards to this document. So on page ten in the footnote, it says that a minimum target of one to 1.5 jobs per household is the target. There should be a minimum target. However, looking at the document, only Uptown beats that minimum target. And since this is very, very highly conceptual, we're not even sure if it will look like that at any point and achieve that, that one area achieve its minimums. So two-part, how realistic is it going to be to get that? And then why not target something more aggressive like 2.5 or 5 in those tight urban areas so that across the city as a whole, we hit a higher target? Also, if you could help people out, in this city, we've heard of something called the activity rate, which is about 33% or so now, and I think that's what you've identified here, is the employment rate, which you're targeting at about 60%. Just how the, that rate compares to the jobs per household and how those two work together? Second question, the Figure Eight Transit Loop seems to be a departure from the regional connectivity objectives of the HM LRT project to a Brampton-centric route to connect Uptown and Downtown. Since transit funding in Canada is very opportunistic, if funding came back to Brampton for the Main Street LRT route, would you recommend the new council approve that? Third question.
You have thirty seconds.
Thank you. I understand the logic for Uptown and Downtown growth areas, but in reference to the major growth areas you've identified on McLaughlin Road, which is primarily two correctional facilities, and the stretch running up Kennedy Road, which looks a lot like a middle finger, I'm curious why those two particular areas were chosen and not others like Rutherford Road, or Dixie, or where else? And the final question, if you were asked to prioritize your action items, are there two or three that you would suggest the city do first?
Thank you. Thank you very much. My next speaker is Dev Ramsoar. Welcome. You don't have to run to come to the mic.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for having me. I want to make the most use of my time, and I have to thank everybody for having me. I prefer to use the more "new" Canadian greeting. Mayorkind and councilkind, thank you very much for having me here, and people and staffkind of Brampton, thank you very much. So first, I actually want to start off by thanking all of you seriously for your time and having me speak here. I think you need tighter security, I have no idea who let me in. So actually, I'm really here to speak about culture and my background in cultural economic development with cities. So actually, sorry, I have to apologize for my voice as well. I want to start by asking you guys a very quick question. Tell me who said this. Come on, kids, let's go and check out economic development plans by the city. Okay, scenario two. Oh my God, Becky, we just got tickets to see Ellen, let's go to Los Angeles and sit in a bank tower. Who said that one? Nobody, right? These things were said by not nobody in history, never has that been said. So when you're looking at developing a town, a city, a province, whatever it is, what is the first thing that we look at? We look at the identity, the mission, the values, the statements. This is what attracts our companies. What brings people into our towns? We say jobs, right? What brings the jobs? Companies. What brings the companies? The identity. What is the identity? It is the culture of our city. The thing that we need to focus on first is the culture when building this economic and city plan. That's truly what I believe. So again, I have to apologize, my voice is getting even more and more hoarse. I do want to use the example of, if there is nothing here to attract the Apples, the Teslas, the Googles, the Amazons, LVMH Group, whatever it is, they're not showing up. We can create whatever plans we want, but if there's nothing here for them, they won't be here, and as a result, there will be nothing for us to build that transit for. There will be nobody for us to build that transit for. So I think we need to rewind, look at that culture. If we are building this city moving forward, what is our identity? If that makes sense. What do we stand for? Who are we? I think, if you want me to be very frank, I think the entire city's economy actually depends on it. I'll use the example of what I have been working on recently, which is Philadelphia. In the last five years, we took Philadelphia, which is, you can We can create whatever plans we want, but if there's nothing here for them, they won't be here. And as a result, there will be nothing for us to build that transit for. There will be nobody for us to build that transit for. So, I think we need to rewind. Look at that culture. If we are building this city moving forward, what is our identity? If that makes sense. What do we stand for? Who are we? I think, if you want me to be very frank, I think the entire city's economy actually depends on it. I'll use the example of what I have been working on recently, which is Philadelphia. In the last five years, we took Philadelphia, which is, you can equate it to what Detroit is right now. And with a very small investment of twenty-five million dollars over the course of four years, that's six million dollars a year in arts and culture, they have managed to turn that investment into almost five billion dollars a year in cultural economic development GDP. What investment have you ever made? Six million turning into a billion dollars? I will say that again. Six million into one billion dollars a year. Or, sorry, five billion dollars, one billion for each. So, I do want you to think about that. When we're looking at economic development, when we're looking at culture, where does that actually lie? Culture is a true economic driver. If we look at all the cities across the world that actually matter, and I'm sorry to use that term, cities that matter, London, Paris, Milan, New York, San Francisco, et cetera, et cetera, the list goes on and on and on. What do we look at? Why do we go to New York? We go there for Broadway. Why do we go to London? We go there for its culture. Again, we don't go there to sit in a bank tower. So, I do want you to look at that very carefully. Right now, we're boasting trade missions that bring in infrastructure of two hundred and fifty million dollars over five years. Isn't that great? Yeah, no. No. If you want me to be honest, I'll use one example of a cultural economic driver. Fashion. Everybody knows I come from that industry. In Ontario alone, forty-nine point seven billion-dollar GDP annually, and we do not have a fashion industry here. That is consumerism alone. Yet, we are boasting two hundred and fifty million dollars' worth of infrastructure over five years. The head, we need to shift our thinking. We need to understand, what are the economic drivers of the time right now? We are no longer in... Thank you. We are no longer in the industrial age. We are no longer in the tech revolution. We are now in the creative revolution, the thought leadership revolution. The companies that will come to the city understand that. And what they are looking for is how are you going to retain those thought leaders in the city? And that's where it starts. Thank you very much for your time.
My next speaker is David Lang. David, yes. Welcome.
Thank you. Hard to make the legs work at this point in time. Hey, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council, staff, and members of the public, and Larry and his team really appreciate the opportunity to be able to chat with you this evening. I'm here tonight to represent the Brampton Grow Green Network and to give those of you that don't know what the Brampton Grow Green Network is, supported by the city of Brampton, the Grow Green Network is an arms-length collection of organisations and individuals having a common vision for Brampton to grow as a sustainable community that is environmentally, socially, and economically healthy and resilient. The network's mission is to advocate, develop, and support collective actions, including public engagement and education programmes that will help Brampton on its sustainability community journey. So, it shouldn't be a surprise that the Grow Green Network fully endorses and supports the Brampton 2040 vision. We are thrilled at the collaborative way in which this vision was arrived at. It reflects the thousands of voices across a broad and diverse spectrum of the community. And we are thrilled that those many voices share our vision that Brampton should grow as a sustainable community, with an interconnected green part network where its peoples act as environmental stewards and where we target One Planet Living. And I just want to bring home to you what One Planet Living actually means, right? So, basically, it says that One Planet Living means we are living, working, and doing business within the natural limits of the planet, right? There are ten principles, and I won't go through all of those principles, but it basically means that we have, we're creating, promoting a culture of sustainable living. We are protecting and restoring land. We are protecting local water resources. We are promoting sustainable farming and healthy diets, including a high emphasis on vegetable proteins. We are encouraging low-carbon transport, walking, cycling, and transit, which everybody has talked about. We are promoting the use of sustainable materials, so reducing our uses of plastics, as an example. And we are basically driving towards zero waste as a city, and we are driving towards zero carbon energy. Now, these are all aspirational goals, but that's what we should be driving towards when we think about One Planet Living, okay? So, we are thrilled at the recognition in the vision of the work that has been done to date on the implementation on the city's Grow Green Environmental Master Plan, which was approved by previous term of council in 2014. And we also appreciate the acknowledgement that there is lots of work still to be done, that the plan is still not fulfilled. We are absolutely ecstatic about the aspect of having a sustainable institute, an institute for a sustainable Brampton, as both a private and public facilitator for local environmental progress, within the objective of positioning Brampton as the vanguard of suburban sustainability. So, in other words, creating us as a leader in sustainable living. So, the Grow Green Network has been challenged and has been working over the last year on community outreach programmes to help promote Brampton's Environmental Master Plan and to engage the community in discussions about sustainable living. So, we would like to be very much a part of that Sustainability Institute. We think that we have a lot to contribute and that as we grow as a community, as we grow as a network, that we can bring a tremendous amount of expertise to bear on the challenges that we're going to face as we move towards that One Planet Living. So, I would humbly ask that you consider the Grow Green Network and its membership as we move forward together in this collaboratively and in collaborative design and work towards making the vision a reality. Thank you very much.
My next speaker is Anmol Dala. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Anmol Dala, and I'm a sixteen-year-old entrepreneur based out of Brampton. And I've been an entrepreneur for a fair amount of time now. And I'm glad to say that my entrepreneurial journey, my prime so far has been in Brampton. So, I lived in, I was in Mississauga before, and, you know, recently moved to Brampton about two, three years ago. And I've received so much support from the city, and I'm really thankful for that. See, one specific department, actually, the Brampton Entrepreneur Centre, has helped me a lot. It has provided me with a lot of opportunities, and, you know, now I'm currently working with Start Appeal. And Brampton Entrepreneur Centre is the one that actually connected me to the Start Appeal. And the opportunities I've received from there, I met with MPs, some city councillors, actually met with Harry last week. And just these opportunities, they don't come from everywhere, right? I think we need this plan to be approved so we can create more opportunities for the youth and they can experience the stuff that goes around in the city and just see what's really about. And it has helped, sorry, it has helped me a lot and so far in my journey. And I just want to say that, you know, this plan means a lot to me, and it's just for my peers, and then I think it should be approved, from my opinion. And yeah, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Hamad Khan here. He's my next speaker. Welcome.
Hello, Mayor Lynda Jeffrey and fellow council members. My name is Hamad Khan, and I'm also a seventeen-year-old high school student that grew up in Brampton. And Mr. Beasley's ideas, I was thrilled to hear all of the phenomenal ideas he came up with and everything that you planned for Brampton 2040. And a lot of things that, certain things that hit me were the second main part of your mosaic, which was the bicycle and trying to get cars off the streets. And that really hit me because during, being in high school, I see that, there's rush hour as in like four to seven, but there's also rush hour like from seven AM from going to school and that. And when going to school, I see that to my left and right, I hardly, like rarely, maybe the one or two times, I see a kid riding a bike or something. But the transit, the bus stops are always full of students with backpacks on, ready to go to school, right? So, your idea of free transit, that really hit me. Although it's potential, it's not a hundred percent, but I feel like that would really help Brampton with students, with the youth who I'm here to represent. Also, as I said, I grew up in Brampton, so around the Shoppers World area, Powerweight Centre, Steel's Kennedy, all that kind of stuff. I noticed that like from the start of living in Brampton to now, there hasn't been any major, although there have been changes to Brampton, there haven't been major, major changes that have appealed my eyes or really gave me an overwhelming feeling, such as this mosaic over here. When I look at this, I'm just like, wow, this is going to be Brampton, this is going to be me showing people like, oh, look, that's where, you see that right there? That was my Shoppers World, that was, this is where, you know, this is where I used to play. You know what I mean? Like, back in the day, you know, to my grandkids or whatever. But, yeah, I was saying that going to Brampton Towers right now, I see individuals that are making a living in that area, right? Affordable, an affordable living. That's what hit me the most. Over these big buildings, and not everyone's going to be able to afford living in spaces like this. But Brampton Towers provides proper living spaces for individuals that can afford such places. So, I was thinking that maybe if we are, if you are going to follow through with this mosaic, what is very important is providing jobs for individuals so they can afford places, living in such a luxurious, you know, in the luxurious design itself. So, also, there's another thing that I want to add was the pollution, getting cars off the street is one thing, the pollutants in the air and this, that kind of stuff. But there's also the pollutants on the ground, like pollutants, litter, all this kind of stuff. This was one time I was walking down the street with, I grabbed a banana on my way out, and I was, I ate the banana, and I was walking down the street, right? With that banana in my hand, I walked around like, I don't even know how many blocks. I was like, you know what, I'm going to carry this banana until I see a garbage bin or I see a compost bin or something like that. And usually, people would be walking down two blocks and they'd be like, okay, you know what, I'll throw that over there, right? That's litter, no? So, I was thinking, sorry, but I was just thinking, you know, more garbage bins and more watch, more people monitoring these people, more monitoring these garbage, recycling, reduce, reuse, recycle. That would be great for the community for, and also for presenting this mosaic, preventing these ideas to the youth is extremely important as well, as we will be the people that are going to be running these places, are going to be going through with the mosaic as well. So, hopefully, I'll be able to represent your idea, the members of the council, to my peers, to my schools, to my region. Thank you for listening to my little presentation.
Our next speaker is Shammy Singh. She's not here, okay. The next speaker left a letter. And our next speaker is Brianna Rowett. Is Brianna here? Welcome.
There we go. Good evening, mayor, council members, and to all the people that attended, good evening. My name is Brianna Theresa Rowett. I am sixteen years old, and I am absolutely honoured to be able to speak here as a youth today. First off, Larry Antoinette, thank you for your presentation. Personally, it provided a refreshing take on my city, our city of Brampton. For eleven years, I lived in Toronto, specifically the North York region. And when my family told me that I was moving to Brampton, I honestly had no idea where that was. It was always a place that we drove by but never stayed. Upon moving here, I was pleasantly surprised. I love my area, I love my schools, and I am quite proud to be a Bramptonian. But, even as a twelve-year-old in middle school, I could tell that there was something missing. The 2040 vision of a cultural mosaic for Brampton has seemed to provide a modern, efficient, and beautiful juxtaposition of tech slash modernism and arts slash cultural identity. As a girl who has spent far too many afternoons shivering and waiting for the bus to come or scrounging through my wallet for bus fare, I stress, the transit is looked at and improved. I must admit that the free bus fare slide really, it hit me, it got me good. When looking at the next twenty-five years, making sure that the growing population and revitalisation of many neighbourhoods does not conflict with the environment, making sure that Brampton is a harmonious blend of state-of-the-art housing and nature is a must, keeping the trees and the environment safe and present is something that should not be overlooked. Lastly, social hubs and arts is something that I really appreciate and hope is discussed further when the Brampton Mosaic is put through. Making sure that fun, F-U-N, is integrated into the logistics of building this new Brampton is something that the youth want to make heard. Creating an arch street, bringing back that fun into Brampton is something that the youth of that time will greatly appreciate. As stated in the beginning of Mr. Beasley's presentation, this is just a vision, a dream. But if you, the local government, and can work with people in the community, including people like me, a sixteen-year-old girl in high school, then we can make this Brampton vision a reality. So, when I, in twenty-five years, am forty-one years old, Brampton won't just be a place that you drive by. Brampton will be a place that you stay. Thank you.
It's Vijay Singh here. My next speaker, Vijay Singh.
Mayor Lynda Jeffrey, members of council, fellow delegations, Professor Beasley, and of course spectators, my name is Vijay Singh, and I was born and raised in Brampton. Today, I represent Brampton Says along with my colleague here with the camera. Brampton Says is a grassroots media organisation that celebrates arts and culture in our city. I also work at Lab B, a co-working space situated in the heart of downtown Brampton. In September of 2017, my Brampton Says colleagues and I had the pleasure of participating in the Planning Division's Future Ready Campaign. We, among thousands of Brampton residents, participated in a glorious exercise of the democratic process. We planned Brampton's vision for the next quarter century. The vision contains within its proposals and suggestions that will retrofit our city to satisfy the demands that are being imposed upon by it. And these demands not only come from a university that will soon find its home in our city, but also from a youthful population expected to compete in a globalised world. Brampton has one of the youngest populations in Canada. Considering that the world will soon have to reconcile with an aging labour force and a productivity slump, Brampton contains within it a demographic goldmine. As a young person, Brampton's status as a bedroom community scares me. Every day, people leave the city to pursue their dreams. The 2040 vision contains within it a pledge, a promise, to create integrated living and work environments, coupled with a comprehensive transportation system as well as adequate corporate sponsorship and investment. To remain a sleeper suburb is to give up on Brampton's demographic potential. As the founder of Brampton says, I view myself as a champion of arts and culture in our talented city. Vision seven, on which I, as well as many knowledgeable and talented individuals worked, outlines support for artistic expression and production. There is a disconnect between the city and residents. Bramptonians are not only some of the most talented artists in the country, but also some of the most talented artists in the world. This is evinced by our status on billboard charts and international symposia. Brampton, as it is being run today, views arts and culture funding as a charitable activity, something that has resigned to the non-profit sector. It's presumptuous of me to speak on behalf of all artists in Brampton, but I think they will all agree with me when I say that the arts is not some sort of luxurious accessory to our society. As my colleague Dave elucidated, it has inexorable economic potential and social development implications. Today, Brampton artists are striving in spite of their environment, not because of it. The arts has great implications on real estate and food and tourism and so on. This vision understands that. Lastly, I'd like to emphasise that the 2040 vision not only contains astute and intelligent proposals and suggestions, but more than anything else, it represents the apotheosis of the democratic process. The vision is something of which Brampton should be tremendously proud. At every step, Brampton residents were treated as consultants. With respect, council, you were voted into council precisely for this reason, to listen to your constituents. Do not let this be a meaningless PR stunt to fuel cynicism in our community. Listen to the taxpayers. a meaningless PR stunt to fuel cynicism in our community. Listen to the taxpayers, listen to your constituents, listen to Brampton. As a young person, there are many reasons for me to perhaps be disillusioned and cynical and pessimistic about city council and the democratic process in the city, but I am none of those things. Because I stand here today, willing to work with you to not only create a better city, but to create your legacy as a council. And by endorsing this vision, you say that you're willing to work with me too. Thank you.
So that exhausts my speakers list, and I have a motion moved by Councilor Moore, seconded by Councilor Bowman, that the following presentations to the special council meeting on May 7th of the Brampton Vision 2040 Living the Mosaic be received. All those in favor, let's carry. I also have a motion moved by Councilor Willen, seconded by Councilor Bowman, that the delegations that we heard this evening be received with regards to Brampton Vision 2040 Living the Mosaic. All those in favor, let's carry. Before I move forward, I just want to say thank you to everyone coming forward this evening. We really appreciate your thoughtful and considered advice. Many of you clearly have done a lot of homework before you came here this evening. Before we go any further, we did promise at the beginning that if there were questions, and I think there were a few, that we would give Mr. Beasley and/or our staff the opportunity to provide clarifications or a response. Can you do that now?
Worship and members of council, I do think that we have heard very strong support for both the process that your staff really unfolded and also for the content in this plan. There were some good questions raised. I want to emphasize right up front, it's what the Board of Trade spokesman said, you have to have continued diligence as you explore every single one of these proposals. They have to go through a further process. They have to have the right kind of analysis. And I really support very much what she said, which was that idea of comparative analysis is very much on the agenda, it has to be part of what you do. And as you do that, every one of these ideas must stand the test of the most rigorous work that you do on it in order to finally make it a thing that you want to adopt and move forward with. So that advice from the Board of Trade, I think, is very prudent advice. The advice of doing business plans and all that is very prudent, and I very much support that. On the question of the location of Ryerson, I want to tell you that our thinking tried to get beyond the implications of this moment at a particular location of what is the first part of what we think is going to be a very big institution in this community. And so there are two things I leave you with about that. First is that we believe Ryerson ultimately will be all over this community. We believe we're talking about 20,000 or more students. We believe they will be in buildings all throughout the downtown of Brampton. And so we felt that in the first analysis of where that first building goes, that it was much more important that that be driven by the imperatives of Ryerson to get off the ground and get this started. And we felt that any one of the locations was, had its pros and cons. Any one of the locations could work very well. And as the great architect Arthur Erickson said, any one of these locations could spawn a very good plan for the balance of the downtown of Brampton. And so we hope that you will see this issue as first driven by the Ryerson University, and then second driven by a continuing dialogue with all the organizations to understand how Ryerson grows, and how it expands, and how it does become that anchor. That doesn't happen at 2,000 students, it happens at 20,000 students. And so we were not prepared to sort of broker one site or another. Instead, we said, get it here, get it started, and grow it into the Columbia of Brampton. And if you know what I mean by Columbia University, you know it's a university that's spread throughout the whole city. And so that's how we feel about that. The Ego Station is vital. It's vital to Ryerson as well. I think we will find a way to deal, you will find a way, I will put it that way, looking at your chief planner, you will find a way to reconcile the needs of that station with the needs of Ryerson and have plenty of room up there on many sites to move forward. And I think it is very prudent that you do that with all the organizations that are a part of this as you make those further decisions. There was one speaker that I think made a very important point. She worried about the Eco Park Trust. She worried whether or not that would be an organization that would actually endanger this open green network that is so important. We believe that the Eco Park Trust is not an alternative to the conservation authorities in this part of the world. It is in fact an addition. We believe it is an additional protection that you have and your community has. But we believe that if you put the energy of your government together with the leadership and energy in this community applied to the Eco Park through the trust, you will not only protect it better, but you will also restore it better. And you will make sure that over the long run, it is a resource for your grandchildren, your great-grandchildren. So I want you to know, and I want the spokesperson, or the delegate to know, that our intention on the trust was the very thing she was worried about. It was the opposite. It was to give more control to this magnificent green context for the foreseeable future. And we've seen around the world the need for that additional level of control as the frenetic process of development is undertaken. The same delegate made another concern known to you, and that was her worry that the figure eight loop might mean that other transit improvements were somehow ruled out, that they weren't going to happen. I wanted to be clear that our intention was not in that drawing, and I apologize to her for that, that didn't say that clearly in that drawing, that it is not to be in, instead of the current plans for expansion. Those plans we see as going forward, the same way that they are planned and proposed, but indeed, an overlay over that. And then over a 25-year period, you will decide what kind of technology works the best. But her worry that one form of transit might be traded off, and she couldn't get to where she needed to go, is a good worry. We did not want to say that the figure eight is an alternative. We wanted to say that the figure eight is a long-term aspiration that brings all of these sites together. And I'd say the same thing about the possibilities of Main Street over the next few years. You will have to decide, you will have to determine whether or not that can be reconciled with the kind of concerns that were raised when first presented. And if that's found to be reconcilable, it will be an addition that goes with all the other additions in transit. The idea, the principle, the prime principle that I commend to you for this 25-year and beyond point of view, is that the more transit, the better. The more kinds of transit, the more layers of transit, the more availability of transit, the more seamlessness of transit, all of that has to work together. So every time you get a chance to get more transit in your community, take it. And that's really what's in this plan. We've tried not to broker between one line or another, but to notice that all of these transit alignments are important, as long as you deal with the impacts on your community, the support of your people, and the availability of funding from time to time. The number of speakers who spoke to culture and the importance of culture, many documents like this vision don't even include arts and culture. It's considered not land use, not planning, it's something else. We felt that what they said about culture was very true, that it is a huge motherload of opportunity for Brampton, but that it did not have a way right now to consistently and systematically get connected to investment, to be able to turn that from a hobby, a holiday, a thing you do part-time, an avocation to a career or a job. And the Arts Alliance is very much designed, as you see it described in the document, as that very facilitator. And so our whole vision is that the future Brampton is known for its art scene, not just as a luxury, but as a job source for many people here in Brampton. And why is that? Because people have already said, we're doing it, we're trying to do it, we need some help. And we don't need philanthropy, we need investors. And that's what we've tried to say in this document. Someone worried about the simple thing of garbage. The reason that we're proposing that you have an institute of sustainability is that's how you operationalize real solutions on the ground with citizens on simple things like garbage. It is true that One Planet Living is about going to zero garbage. But the way that happens is not in rooms like this, it's not in policy documents like this. It happens through people on the ground putting programs in place to go and start to manage our resources in a different way, and therefore yield less garbage. And then when we do have garbage, find ways to reuse it and reuse it and reuse it, and you know that story. But what we didn't see here was the institution to make that happen. And so we think even the simple proposition of a concern about garbage is dealt with in this vision from that point of view. One of the spokesmen worried about the chart that I showed you on the jobs housing balance and the number of jobs per household. I'm worried that that chart may be a little misunderstood. That chart was not presented to show you that that's the maximum potential out there, and therefore, well, maybe it does or does not work for the objectives. It was to show you the minimum potential that's put forward right now in your projections, and to be able to tell you with confidence that the minimum productivity that you need, the minimum accommodation that you need, will be satisfied. In fact, there is much more potential in this plan, and much more opportunity in the processes of designing these areas to get to a much more intensive use. We have no compunction in telling you that in this plan, and all that's possible in this plan, you can go beyond even the 60% at-home jobs for residents. So these numbers do work as a minimum. They all need to be worked out place by place, circumstance by circumstance. The important thing about this jobs housing balance, though, is not whether or not the plan accommodates enough. It is whether or not the Institute for Enterprise, Brampton Enterprise, can find the companies and get them here. Companies that have the right kind of jobs to meet the profile of credentials and talents and skills that exist in your community and that are getting better and better because of Ryerson and your other institutions in the community. So I just want to give you security that the technical work that was done was to prove the minimum, not to define the maximum. And I hope that that gives you that security. A very important question was asked by that same delegate about these sites, the availability of sites along Kennedy and McLaughlin. And I want to tell you a little story. I also was a chief urban designer in Dallas, Texas, where I did a similar kind of visionary document. And in that document, we identified a location that had wonderful big sites that could really bring all of Dallas right to its waterfront, the Trinity River. Those sites had jails on them. Those jails are now being relocated because there's a clear understanding that the destiny of the city is based on the evolution of sites like that. And so if you can connect large sites that even right now appear to have development on them that's never going to change, if you can connect them well, and if you can build a synergy, you will find there's a natural inclination, both by the people who own that land to want to exploit that wealth, and by you as a community who want to use that to build your community a new way. So we did find significant sites on McLaughlin. We did find significant sites all along Kennedy. We could have chosen other locations, but they were locations that would not have reinforced your downtown, would not have reinforced your uptown, would not have brought things together as clearly, and therefore, we did not exploit those more. We were, you remember, I said to you, that one of the things was to find areas for growth, but also areas for calmness, because that's what your community said that they wanted. So I hope you see that we have been strategic in trying to both locate growth areas and then connect those up with all the most modern forms of transportation. The last thing I'll say on this is, from this delegate, was what were the things I would prioritize? It is not my job to prioritize. It is this gentleman's job to prioritize, and this gentleman's job to prioritize, and this lady's job to prioritize, and to bring that back to you as a strategic, intelligent, smart plan for implementation. But I will say this. I think one of the most important things to kickstart this whole vision is to kickstart those 30 or so organizations that we talked, that we propose in this vision, and to kickstart those four institutes that we propose in this vision. Because those, as they grow out of the community, are going to be self-driving forces. They're going to bring their own resources. They're going to make your job much easier because you'll have more leadership, you'll have more resources, you'll have more intention, and you'll have more dedication and commitment. And so I can't say what's best to do first or last, but I can say to tap into this energy that's been built over the last nine months to a year, and to institutionalize that in these organizations will absolutely secure that this vision has a much better chance of survival over many different mandates of many different councils and many different interests. I think that covers most of the issues that were raised. If I can help with any questions you have, I'm happy to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beasley. I have six more speakers, and we've been at it for two and three-quarters hours, council. Do you want to make your questions shorter so we can perhaps give an ending to this, or do you want to take a break? Do you want to keep going? If you can keep it short, because I think most people have been here most of the evenings. Council, pleasure, my first speaker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I will try and make it as quick as possible. First, I've said, I said this before, and I'll say it again, you are sitting in the most uncomfortable seats in Brampton. We apologize for that. Please be careful getting up. You don't want to hurt your back and your legs or knees or anything like that. But as of tomorrow, this council chambers will be shut down, and we will be installing new, more comfortable seats for when you come back next time. So that's good. I wanted to, I know, you know, staff have been thanked. I wanted to thank the public for coming. I can see wards two and six are well represented here tonight, and I thank you for coming. To staff that are here, first, I'll say to the commissioners, I do thank you for your leadership on this. But I also ask you and request that you go to your staff, the, you know, the real legs of your departments and the ones that have really worked hard in doing this. Not that you guys haven't worked hard, but I know that your staff have worked really hard. So I ask you to thank them on our behalf, or at least my behalf. To the people that are still downstairs and staff that are streaming this in their offices or on the first floor, thank you so much for coming. Peter, Larry, my first question really is around the, kind of, the collaboration and the ability to partner up with the province for funding and, you know, regional government. How do you see that going in terms of, you know, getting provincial dollars? Because a lot, what's in this book, has to do with provincial funding.
I think you're going to hear a specific set of strategies about how to approach the province on many different topics, and probably also the region. I would only argue this, that I've noticed in my own time in local government, where also a lot of responsibilities were shared, and a lot of funding was senior funding, that the most articulate communities were those that systematically dealt with the most articulate communities were those that systematically dealt with and, and collected information, understood their issues, had the attitudes and opinions of their citizens freshly brought forward and were able to frame their needs and their issues. And those are the communities that I noticed were the ones that seemed to constantly be announcing those solutions. And so, that's why a big part of this vision is for these issues, particularly where senior governments are at play, the social issues, the housing issues and the health issues, that you position yourself as a prime player, not a supportive player. And that as you become bigger and more complex and the issues you face are going to be closer and closer to the doorstep of City Hall, it's going to become more and more important that you are in command of those issues and the attitudes of your citizens about it. And that's why I think that if you can become more systematic, become more comprehensive and become more sustaining in your attention of these issues, it will serve you well. The second aspect is that there is nothing better than to be able to go to a senior government and say, "We're already doing this." And I believe that all three of these proposals that we've made on these very tough issues, a big component are the self-help things that can happen within a community. There are the things that you in partnership with community people can do. There are the things you can bring philanthropy to, you can bring crowdsourcing to, other more localized ways to express solutions, illustrate solutions, model solutions. In my community, we often would model something that would then change provincial legislation for other communities. And I think that our proposals in this vision really position you to have a very credible voice when you need help because you've had a very credible, credible functionality just on your own and being very responsible on these issues.
With that, Larry, and I agree with you 100%. And I, and I ask, you know, we had a delegate put it very bluntly to us that, you know, we were elected here to, to give our residents that voice and they asked us to, to bring forward, you know, things like this. And I challenge residents with an upcoming provincial election to request that their MPPs fight for Brampton, because I don't think that we've, we've had that opportunity. And with this vision and with this council hopefully supporting this unanimously here today, you know, we request that all residents of Brampton, you know, when the, when the province comes knocking at your door looking for, for their vote, then request the same thing, that they support Brampton and prove to that. With respect to, I know I said I was going to be short. Really quickly, if I keep saying really quickly, then it'll sound better. 13,000 people, you know, when I first heard that, I didn't think that that was, that was a lot. It's a quarter of a percentage in, over the grand, 600,000. But, you know, listening and looking and really going through this book, that is a lot of data and it's a lot of great data to have. 13,000 people giving their, laying their voice to, to, you know, some of the surveys and the questions that we have pulled to them. So, I think that's actually excellent. I really do and I commend staff for doing that. Transit free, absolutely, for sure, one day, absolutely. But marketing, advertising, you know, somebody's got to pay for that. Hopefully, we don't go back to the tax base. But I know Bob Darlin's group is currently looking at, at doing something in the near future. Green space park, you know, not one member of this council has ever not supported adding more green space. You know, we always talk about it. Whenever there's an infill site coming or a planning in our area, we're always asking for more green space, more connections as well to our green space. Larry, you talked a lot about different ways that we plan communities. And I'm not talking about the, the big picture items like uptown, downtown or the centers, but with respect to kind of that livable, walkable, and, you know, every time you had kind of talked about it, I said to myself, "We already have that. It's Mount Pleasant Village." And how are we going to, you know, support if something doesn't work within Mount Pleasant? How are we going to support Mount Pleasant being greater than what it is? But essentially, every time you talked about it, that's what kept on, I saw the images, that's what I kept on coming back to.
As a matter of fact, we used images of Mount Pleasant Village, you'll notice, when we were talking about new development. But it is interesting when we were out in Mount Pleasant Village and we were talking to both residents and the developer, there were a number of issues which were plain and clear when you looked at it from a holistic, complete community that had not been resolved well. And we listened to the developer explain to us why they had not been resolved well. And some of those had to do with the fact that there was not the level, the intimate level of co-design that we're now proposing. It's one of the reasons that we really set us on the path of that co-design concept, because they were saying, "If we had been able to work even closer together at the design level and if we had been able to broker some things that we were not able to broker, then there were some things that we would have done differently and some expertise which we did not have in our organization that we would have brought into play or you could have brought them into play from your own economic development office, which they agree with has, has a lot of expertise." So, Mount Pleasant is a great step forward for this community. It is a community that you can look at for inspiration, but you can do better. And the way to do better is not to lay a trip on the development community or, or potential citizens that are going to live there, but rather to collaborate and co-design with them. I can't tell you, with all of my experience, I can't tell you how powerful co-design is in solving problems to everyone's satisfaction.
Good.
Councilor Plessy, could you summarize? I have four more speakers.
Yep.
So, hopefully, we can summarize.
You talked about not picking this apart and I just, I don't see picking it apart as a negative. I want to, I want everybody to be aware that, you know, when, this is what I do. I pick things apart to try and get into it, find out how we can do it. The first thing I have to pick apart is, you know, 2040. Can't we do it in 2025, 2030? Like, can't we, like, a lot of people have said they're not going to be around. Let's try and get them. Specifically to stuff like arts and culture, how it is so important in our community. And I know that we're coming forward very soon.
Culture master plan.
The culture master plan and, you know, that's something that I, I can't, I can't wait till 2040.
Well, all I, all I want to say back to you is the 2040 was the outside date. It wasn't the beginning date. The beginning date is tomorrow morning.
Best time to plant a tree was 20 years ago. The second best time to plant a tree is today. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Dillon.
Thank you so much. So much to talk about, but not enough time. Just want to thank you and your team, Harry and staff. I think most importantly, I want to thank the residents as well for showing up today and being such a, an integral, integral part of this process. You know, we, we are fortunate that we have a clean slate to work with when we compare ourselves to, to other cities that have been fully built out. And so, when you're talking about Heritage Heights or downtown, I think that's a perfect example and I think there's a lot of potential. This is a very ambitious plan. I think it's a great plan. Very exciting, gives us a really good glimpse at what our city will look like. And I guess from here, it's up to our staff, our residents and political will around the table to really get this plan implemented. And I think one of the key things that I saw out of this is that Brampton is at risk. And I think that just goes to show the, what's the word I'm looking for? We got to work quick to make this all happen because if we want to see our city look like this in 25 years, we've got to start working, as you said, tomorrow morning. And so, there's two areas I just really want to talk about. Again, I won't, I'll try to keep it short. One is transit. We had $400 million on the table for HMLRT, Heritage Main, from Port Credit to, you're looking at me? Talk about it? HMLRT from Port Credit to Brampton Gold. There was money left on the table. And now, what you've said, I think I've heard what you say is that if there's an opportunity going forward for the, for any route to get funding, that we should take it. I'm taking a look at, so, that was a regional connection. And I think that's what the rationale for the funding was, is that for the provincial plan is to connect, you know, the region together and that was an integral, integral part of it. Ours is really, the loop idea is local, which is good. I think it's something that we need. In terms of construction costs, I'm looking down the road in terms of funding. From Steels to downtown Gold was about $200 million. And so, obviously, we have to look at through a different lens. We also got to take into account some of the cost, the time, ridership, you know, will this have funding opportunities as well? So, based upon, on the regional lens, we were given funding because it connected us. This is a local lens now. Do we have, you know, will we be able to, to make a case to, to the province to, to get funding for that? So, that's one thing. I'm just throwing points out. Second thing is if we had, for example, funding for that HMLRT, hypothetically, if we got it, we could also make a case that to connect the downtown area, sorry, Steels to McLaughlin up through to downtown Brampton, down Kennedy, like a beltway. Just throwing it down, they have it in DC. And so, what you can do is you can kind of isolate that area. It's going back and forth. You can still connect to that north-south and when east-west comes, you can have a connection there as well. So, I'm just throwing that out for you. There's a couple of other things. I'm just trying to see what I want to talk about now. A question for you very quick. If you were to prioritize east-west or the north-south connection to downtown, in your opinion, what is the most important thing for you? Because I heard around the table as well, rather than this connection, east-west was more important. I just want your opinion just very, very quickly on that.
Well, I can't speak to the whole transit system and how the whole system's moving, but I can speak to the fact that we're proposing for you that you develop a dual core for your future city. This is going to change, by the way, all the regional thinking on transit and everything else. They are looking at ridership. They are looking at growth. I would argue that getting your two, downtown and uptown tightly connected as early as possible is a very good thing. And I think that if this is endorsed and if you move quickly in the uptown scenario and you move quickly in the unlocking of the downtown scenario, you're going to have transit planners all over this region changing their numbers, seeing where in fact the growth areas are and wanting to connect to those growth areas. And it's going to be a different equation.
So, because when I look at McLaughlin, you had already answered it, we do have two jails. We have Power Town as well. We got housing on the eastern side of it. And so, the potential for them to move, they did in Dallas, that's really great, but I'm really looking at the likelihood of it and how quick we would be able to do that. So, it's a concern.
Well, I will tell you this and it's important to say this. These cores don't develop in three years, four years, five years. You know, you've got to look out. You've got to look at what happens when you've got a lot of infill happening in downtown. You've got a lot of uptown happening, Power Aid and, and Shopper's World. That's going to take a lot of the growth energy in the early years. You need to have sites that you're keeping ready and positioning in the later years so you can reinforce the growth of downtown. It has a growth area. And the best way you can do that is to start to make your transit investments that make it inevitable, that those are the next expansion areas.
The reason I bring it, we'll end it to transit.
Councilor Dillon, could you perhaps summarize?
Getting to the end of transit is that the discussion I've heard around here was that if you build it, there was a lot of talk about if you build it, they will come. And a lot of people were against that notion, even though there was some numbers to justify it. It's almost, it's, it's a concern to me that we go into it with potentially jails moving and if you build it, it will come. And so, there's no guarantee of that. Again, you've answered this, I'm just going to move on. Second part is, final part is in terms of growth. I was taking a look at the Power Aid area, that whole sector going up to, up Kennedy. A lot of it includes existing plazas, for example, some of them that are recently built. There's a LA Fitness there, there's Home Depot, I believe. And there's some other industrial locations as well. And so, we added, we're adding based upon this plan, a lot of housing there. And so, feasibility of it is something, again, that I'm wondering if, if it's, if it's possible. And so, that's just one point. Second point is, we look at the, the growth town centers. And the two areas in my ward, which is Ward Nine, Ward Nine is Trinity. And you're looking at Ward Ten, which is, I believe, Bram East. I'm looking at the likelihood of those. And so, I've had some conversations as well with some of our staff and those areas are already planned. And so, again, the word concern is that for the Bram East portion of it, that it's, that it can become a reality, because I know there's some discussions that are going on with some of those landowners there. The second thing is Trinity Common. It's fairly new. It's built out around it with housing. And I'm just wondering what the potential is to actually make that into a, one of those growth centers. Again, a concern.
Councilor Dillon.
Go to the last point.
You really need to wrap up because you've been at it for nine minutes now and I've got three more speakers.
Can we look at the greenfield areas such as Heritage Heights? Those are undeveloped. Would we not want to focus more on that section in terms of growth and attracting employment rather than some of these already built-out areas? Because to me, again, to use the word clean slate, it's a very clean slate. We can do anything we want there. And just to ask you a question, if you can provide an answer, is that something we can be looking at? Because I know you, you've spoken about really developing our corridors, but if we have existing space already, you know, the potential to maximize that area is already there. We don't have to worry about moving a plaza or moving a residential house.
Thank you, Councilor Dillon. Maybe we can let Mr. Beasley answer.
Very, very fast answer on the, on the town centers. I commend you to take the 25 or beyond year view. I also commend you that if a landowner sees an opportunity that's now in the interest of a city that may not have been defined even a week ago, they'll start thinking also about what's in their interest as well. And I think you, you might find the conversations start to change. And the pattern of each and all of those town centers has to be tested, carefully tested through a process, and I've said that. Some of them will happen sooner rather than later. Our first assessment by urban designers was that there is room and there is potential in those areas. Then the second thing is your idea of the greenfields, in fact, one of the five is in the heart of the greenfield. And here's what we said really simply. There's a hospital trying to find a location. The town center should find the hospital and that should be anchor for that town center. So, the hospital thinking and the town center thinking need to be brought together by your planners into an idea that these things do create the anchor in the greenfield area around which those other complete neighborhoods would cluster.
So, just to conclude, just 10 seconds.
It better be 10 seconds because you've been at it for 11 minutes now. I'm, I'm trying to be fair here.
Really, really excited about the hubs, exploiting our diversity, the Institute for Higher Performance and that we're really setting the bar high to raise the activity rate, which is the jobs to population ratio. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Dillon. Councilor Moore.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I moved the motion. You have it before you moved by myself and seconded to adopt the recommendations in the staff report. I think it's an outstanding document. I want to commend everybody who played a role in putting it before us today. I want to commend everybody, um, who played a role in, um, putting it before us today. Uh, it's interesting. Um, there was a time when conversation about an uptown and a downtown is something we feared. That somehow development going somewhere else in the city, um, was not a good thing. And I think that you've shown us that it's an opportunity to embrace. That when I look at uptown and downtown and when you talk about, um, needing calm space, that area between tenants' deals and downtown is by its very geography calm space because it's valley land and the creek that runs and connects, uh, those two. And, and I know that Dale and Dave have left, but in terms of cycling and alternative modes of transportation along there. Counselor Paleshi mentioned the Mount Pleasant design and I, I actually spoke at a conference in Montreal a couple of years ago. And I used Mount Pleasant as an example of how you can design a community that you think is going to function in one way. But in actual fact, there is a role for the municipality to play in programming. And so it's not just about the built design. It's about the role that the municipality plays to assist and to facilitate, um, activity and the programming that takes place. I know Counselor Willans and Counselor Paleshi, when they became, uh, councillors this term, looked at opportunities and along with economic development, whether it's the farmer's market, to get people out of their live works, to get people to come to the east side of the tracks after they get off the go train instead of running to the west to get into their cars, to come to the farmer's market, to come to the Friday night, um, movie night. So there is always a role for the municipality regardless of which of those town centers. And it's not solely the municipality, but it's about the partnerships, um, that are developed, that are unique to those, those town centers or the, the city centers. I love the Queens Boulevard. I have to tell you, when you drive along there, uh, to me, uh, is just, there was a time when you've been in Brampton since 1964, like I have, when that was really the, the place. There were two hotels. Over the years, they became not so nice hotels. But, um, but the fact is that it was ugly, but it was healthy. That you've shown us what enormous potential. Just even changing the name from Queen Street to Queens Boulevard. I mean, that changes the whole way we think about the opportunities for that stretch of roadway. But I will say this, and I had a conversation just earlier today, I think it was with, uh, Commissioner Meneses. We today need to look at opportunities for creating parkland, parkettes, uh, open space along there. If we're going to intensify, whether it's with businesses, mixed use, condos, they need a place to walk their dog and to take their kids to a park. And you don't see that along there. You see it on the north side. Uh, they can access those parks that are, uh, in the May Dock subdivision or the valley land if they're close to the Tobico Creek. But on the south side, you're not, you don't see that. We need to start planning for that today. So it's, you can't see it in the pictures, but I'm sure that you've provided for it. And the last comment I want to make is you talk about tomorrow, heavy lifting starts. This has been a year of really intense work on the part of our staff, um, under your leadership. And, um, you know, we, we get the easy part. We get to endorse it. Uh, we participated in it. But the heavy lifting is not just for staff. It's not just for the leaders that will be sitting around this table in future councils. It's for the residents. And it's too bad a lot of them have left here today. You've demonstrated that with the right conversation, they will come out. And they come out in droves and they have great ideas. The difficult part for the people sitting around this table is that those same people don't come out when we're dealing with a planning application that is coloring outside the lines of where we've usually, um, dealt with applications. So I know a lot of people have left, but please support the leaders sitting around this table because it's really easy to cave when the only voices you hear at that podium are to not approve an application. And a staff report that says, this supports the future vision. We only hear the voice, tonight was so refreshing for me. We heard the positive voices coming from the community. We only hear the negative voices when there's a staff report or a recommendation or a controversial issue that is something different from what we've usually done. So I really, um, I implore the community, those who are, who've left and maybe watching it on YouTube or plan to watch the rest of it, um, tomorrow, or if they're in the atrium. But seriously, um, over the past number of years, the amount of engagement that we've not enjoyed around this table has, has really been to the detriment of, um, making what I think are evidence-based decisions. So we need to hear the positive voices to help, help us make a balanced decision around here. That it's, it's really easy when you get people yelling at you and telling you not to do something. And, uh, so I guess that's the last comment I want to make, um, is that we're all in this together. And this whole exercise just demonstrated and proved to me that, again, with the right conversation, they'll come out. And so, um, heavy lifting starts now, folks. Thank you, everybody, for, for all your work and, and contribution to this. It really helps to, um, uh, give, give the next and, and future councils their mandate as they move forward. Give them the courage to make the tough decisions. Thank you.
Counselor Spohary.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, and, um, thank you, Larry, for the presentation. Um, I'll, I'll be quick. Uh, two points. Um, first of all, the, um, and the plan that you've put forward, uh, it, 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 um, it supports the place to grow where Brampton is required to, uh, develop about 40% of its future growth on Brownfield. So that would mean the downtown, the McLaughlin, the Kennedy roads. So that, your plan, whatever you put forward, it does, uh, it does support the place to grow plan. So basically, this, this plan will achieve the provincial, um, objective. Is that correct?
Um, I think that that is 98% correct. There may be a couple of locations where there have been lands designated just for employment that we would argue should be mixed use, achieving equal or more employment than had been projected, but perhaps to give a more complete mixed-use community. Excuse me. But to the extent that we focus within the built city, it's absolutely consistent with those regional objectives.
And the McLaughlin lands would be part of that, where the jails and all that, that's probably considered Brownfield.
Yes.
Now, the, um, on that point, um, I think that the biggest challenge, and perhaps, uh, you can maybe expand on this, is that it's actually to attract the, the major employers to come to Brampton. If you look at other cities, uh, the size of Brampton, they have a, a good, uh, presence of office. Like take Hamilton or Oakville and, um, uh, Arkham and so on. But Brampton, we're having really struggling. Do you feel that by increasing our population, uh, that will become the caveat to attract the, uh, the, the large employers, the, the banks, the insurance companies, the high tech, the, uh, and, and, and so on? Do you feel that will be the trigger? Or do you, do, do we need to do more in order to make that happen?
Counselor, I don't think just the population growth is the trigger. Whereas a lot of cities that are growing quickly as bedroom communities, their role within their region is not changing. What is key in this plan is to create genuine places with diversity, interest, availability so they can be developed, amenities. When those things happen, it will draw companies. And we see that in many places in the world. Just the growth itself could perpetuate what you're seeing already, the continuation of a bedroom community. I'm not saying a bedroom community is bad, but once you approach a million, your commu-, your citizens are telling you they want the places. And those places are the absolute secret to this strategy along with this institute working with your Economic Development Commission to, to then go and target the absolute right companies to come here, to come in clusters, to take pieces of this and make it theirs. And then that will be the magnet that draws other things.
Okay. Uh, the second question, and we're really thrilled about the university coming. The, we've heard some people say that it's in the wrong location. I tend to believe or tend to agree with, uh, these comments because from my understanding is, uh, there's going to be a lot of the, uh, the main, the, the main area of redevelopment is going to be taken up by parking, parking for the goal and parking for the university. And to me, uh, putting parking in such a key area where, uh, it's, to me, it doesn't make, does not make redevelopment intensification, we see the nice picture that we were provided with all this great, uh, intensification around the, the transit hub, uh, where I believe is probably the, the number one, uh, location in Brampton for redevelopment, being in the corridor of the, between Toronto and Kitchener. I think it's number one, uh, of all Brampton. And taking it up with a lot of parking, to me, is, doesn't make a lot of good sense.
Counselor Spohary, I think Mr. Beasley's already responded to this question before. Is there something new you can ask him?
The, the issue of the parking, a lot of good land is going to be taken up by parking. Do you, do you think that that's a good use of land in, right down in the core where it's a key area?
No. I don't think that's a good use of land.
Right.
And I don't think it'll happen. I think if you work in a co-design process with Ryerson, with the other developers, you're going to find very quickly that everyone understands the value of land and everyone's going to be thinking about much more intelligent parking solutions. Number one, less parking. Number two, parking underground and different ways to handle parking. I don't think in the future your downtown will thrive with, you know, thousands of surface parking. But what will happen is if you can get that university anchored here and in the first few years, yes, they will have some parking, but get them anchored, get them growing, get them doing what they have to do, get them drawing the other, uh, kindred, uh, activities and organizations that want to be near that university, you will find very quickly that parking is a very good land bank for more development that will intensify. So it's a short-term proposition at best.
And I understand that through the chair, just the final point, that that land is not in the ownership of the city or private developers. It's in the ownership of the province. And that's what worries me is that the province, um, may, um, decide that that's the way it's going to be. And, um, they, they may not cooperate in, 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 in intensifying the, the site.
Well, I, I just commend you to embrace very, very strongly as a political organization, the co-design concept. That co-design concept is done with all the players and it's looking at all the interests. And we've found that you can argue a good case, you can show alternatives in a co-design process that you can't do in the old-fashioned processes. And I truly believe that will yield a much more intelligent balance of all the interests, including parking in that.
So we must be steadfast and go for the best.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselors Spohary. Counselor Madero.
Uh, thank you through the chair. And, uh, I think I have all the sentiments of gratitude and I think we'll stop for, for this plan. I see this plan as a call for action. Um, and certainly there, I think from the, um, implementation, I think there will be, um, similar to what Brampton Board of Trade referred to. Uh, we're, we're really going to get those numbers right, but that's another conversation for another day. One thing that did surprise me that did not come up, so you talked about technology as being an underpinning in utilizing it. So the whole smart city concept. So when you see all these activities interwoven, I think, you know, there's an opportunity here. And I, I don't know if that can be revisited, but that smart city concept, is that something that you looked at?
That is one of the reasons that we made technology one of the absolutely key lenses for this. Uh, smart city technologies on so many fronts that we could talk the next two hours about it is going to transform municipal government and it's going to transform your relationship with private development. And we believe you should bring it to the top of your agenda. So when you start to plan uptown, when you start to do the detailed planning to solve the existing issues in downtown, when you start the town centers, instead of someone thinking late in the game, smart city technology, we commend you that you bring that right forward in the planning and you make it an integral part of the planning. It has so much potential to not only make these areas more appealing to the people who are going to come and, and have their offices here and do their work here, but it'll also make your government much more efficient.
And I guess through.
And we do mention it in the, in the vision.
Yeah. And, and through the chair, I guess, I guess the comment that you always have is these plans are always good as the resolve council to, um, enact them and implement them. And certainly this should be above the political cycles. But unfortunately, um, every decision that we make, one of the issues that I think that you have is that on one end, our core services should be about, you know, cleaning the snow, uh, cleaning your neighborhoods and so on. And sometimes with these big plans, um, and that's something more, I think, that the CAO and staff is that we get away from our core business and we start getting into, you know, the vision, which is aspirational in itself. But I think that's where the challenge is going to be because, and I think Counselor Moore touched on some of the stuff I wanted to say, but the same aspects of some of the organizations are all loving this plan. But when it starts touching your property base and we get into budget time, it's the same people who, you know, really want us to look at our property tax and, and how we're, we're spending it wisely. So it becomes a conundrum and, and so I, I think that's always going to be the challenge, but that's the challenge for every municipal government. But certainly I thank you for all the work and I think there's a, a lot of potential for this. And, uh, certainly Brampton, uh, thanks you for the work that you did.
Thank you. Counselor Miles.
Thank you very much, um, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to start off by saying that there's nothing that I could say today about this plan that hasn't been said better by the members of public, of the public that have come before us this evening. Those of you have, who have spoken, you've really blown me away. I, I am so prepared. I think the members of the public are far better prepared to deal with this conversation than a lot of the members of council, quite frankly. You've done your homework. You've been involved and, uh, you've just made so much sense. You know what? There's nothing about this plan that scares me because every step of the way, we will have leadership, um, making a decision. And, and we've opened up a voice in our community that we're not going to quiet now. I mean, some of the young people, BJ, I was so impressed, Dave, the young people. If, just add your intellect to, um, what we do as a municipality and you're going to help us take things, you know, so much further. You just add that a lot of the elements that, quite frankly, some of us older ones don't even understand. But then a lot of us are retiring and I really, really hope that we get some young, intelligent people making decisions to, to seek office and run because you are amazing. The plan is phenomenal. I don't want to talk about the plan. But what I want to talk about is, is I'm sitting here tonight and I'm going, oh my God, this. Do you know, everybody here knows, we have struggled and struggled and struggled to find an identity for Brampton, to find something that's going to bring the whole community together, that's going to make us just feel so proud of our city. I, I've always thought we live in a great city. But we always, we've always been looking for that thing that sets us apart. And we've al- always been looking for a way to make our community feel proud of where they live. And I'm sitting here tonight saying, oh my God, this is it. I think this is the milestone. This is the step forward. This is what we need. So I, I'm so happy to be a part of this conversation tonight. And, uh, Mr. Beasley, I don't even know how to thank you for, for the work that, that you've done because I've been on council a lot of years and I can tell you that we have searched. I mean, we did the Flower City Strategy. We've done Communities in Bloom. We have done so many different things to try and build that sense of pride in, in the city in which we all live. And I, and I do think that this is, this is it. I don't think I've ever sat in a meeting this long and heard everybody be positive. Like usually the public's yelling at us, right? Why are you doing that? That, that's, that's stupid. That's, I don't like the way you're doing that. Everybody tonight is so positive. Thank you. Thank you for your energy and, uh, and your involvement and your commitment. I'm going to go home really happy tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Bowman.
Thank you very much through Madam Chair.
I will make it very short. Thank you very much, Larry. Thank you very much to staff, Antonetta. You've done a wonderful job. There's a lot of work ahead. I think that our job as counselors is to make hard decisions. And when it comes time to make these hard decisions, I think this is one of these decisions that's not so hard to make. So I'm looking forward to the vote on that. But I think we've heard loud and clear, we heard from thirteen thousand people, we heard from twenty-odd delegates today, or this evening, and we've heard from many, many people shaking their heads and clapping in this audience. They don't want us to look back. They want us to start moving forward. They want us to start tomorrow, and they want to start this plan moving. So I'm looking forward to doing it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Gibson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Harry, for coming to council and suggesting that we hire Larry. Harry and Larry Show. I'm not going to dwell on some of the things other people say, because I agree. But Larry, do you remember the first conversation you and I had at that workshop with the council? So you know what I'm going to ask you? We've had many, many visions, planning documents, whatever you want to call them, here at the city, that sit on shelves. What's your best advice to make sure this doesn't get shelved?
It was that comment that caused us to add the, all the recommendations on involvement of people, creating organizations and institutions that can drive this forward, not just the council, not just the staff, not even just the Board of Trade, but as you see, some thirty-some institutions to tap into the energy that we discovered in your community. And I stand by that. I have lived and worked in a community where it was the citizens who drove things forward, not just, you know, in a public, happy meeting, but taking on the work. And I did hear recently, one of the institutes, where a group of people here in town have said, well, maybe we'll go ahead and just start building the institute, and then when the city comes to us, we'll have the basics ready. That kind of spontaneity, I think, gives you very, very good chances, good odds, of moving this forward beyond any one mandative council, any one council advocate, or any one strong staff person. Although, you need a strong mandative council, you need advocacy by counselors and politicians, and you need staff people who will take on the hard job to do this. But what you really need is that driving energy in the community. I think you have two very soon-to-come policy documents, the Economic Development Master Plan and the Culture Master Plan, also built through a lot of public involvement, that are going to reinforce this. And I think that gives you a group of people that you can tap into as almost, I would say, the starting group for moving it forward and keeping it moving.
I'm going to make a suggestion, maybe more to staff than anything else. In the past, when we've endorsed, and a lot of the endorsements came unanimously to endorse some of the visions we had, some of the planning we had, Queen Street Corridor downtown, all kinds of. And then what happens is, I think council makes an assumption that previous staff are working on those decisions that are made, and then they get lost. Because when we make that assumption, it's happening, and then it's not, you all of a sudden realize, at one point, maybe three, four, or five years down the road, that that's been shelved. And that was my, if you remember, the first workshop we had, I was really bugged about that, because we put a lot of effort with residents and put these things together. I have total confidence in this senior staff, total confidence, that this won't get shelved. But five years from now, it may not be the same faces around the table. So I'm going to suggest that somehow, when we do get reporting back on this in the early stages, maybe this year, or in the new term of council, that we create a reporting back twice a year. So then there's no choice. Then it's up to the clerk to make sure that the reporting gets coming back, it's on an agenda, and it's in front of council's faces, so council doesn't forget about it. Senior staff don't forget about it. And we're continuing to work on and see that vision to fruition. It's just a suggestion, but I, this is so great. I hate to see, you know, I'm retiring this year, but I don't want to look back ten years from now and say, what the hell did they ever do? You know, they just shelved another one of them. I don't think that's going to happen in this case, but if we make sure that it can't happen, maybe it won't. It'll take another term of council, or another council, to say, we're putting a stop to that. And I dare any council after this to do that. Because this is, as you said, the people's vision. This isn't our vision. It's not your vision. It's not Harry's vision. It's the people's vision. And I wrote that down, when I read, first read this, I put it right down on a sticky. That, to me, said, mountains. Thirteen thousand people decided that this is what they want for Brampton. I think that's huge. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Pleschey.
Madam Mayor, I understand it's been moved and seconded. I ask, and I believe this council's done it before, as a symbolic gesture, I ask for all members of council to put their name to this as a seconder. And I also ask for a recorded vote standing, please.
Okay. Well, before we get to the vote, I think I'm your last speaker, and I just wanted to say thank you to Antonetta, and to all of your team, your core team, and all of our staff. I know they've been working on this for months, on weekends and evenings, and it's become a labor of love. So thank you very much. I want to thank senior management team. I know a lot of work has gone into it. I want to thank you for the positive picture that you have painted for us to follow. I think it was a very robust plan. Thank you very much. It's inspirational and aspirational. And I think you've warned us that we have to keep steering this forward. In other words, we can't just let this ride. So I thank you for that guidance. And it's going to be more than one city council mandate. It's going to take a number of decades to achieve this. It was really good to hear from a lot of our residents how many of the initiatives that they liked, that you already recommended, that we were already working on. So that gives me confidence that we're on the right path. So I thank our staff, because they've often shown initiative, and it's clear that it's been captured in your document. I was really interested by something you said in the vision with actions to make it happen. One of the things you mentioned, it's kind of buried in the report about why the vision is so urgent, but you talked about our identity and our image, and the fact that your team tell us that our image is not clear, and our brand is out of date. So I think that that means to me that in the future, we have to do a rebranding exercise and go back to the people to make sure we're on the right track. So I look forward to that rebranding exercise and finding a way to refresh the work that you've helped start for us. So I thank you for that, and I look forward to tomorrow morning. So, council, we have before you the motion. It's been moved by Counselor Moore, and seconded by everyone else on council. And Counselor Pleschey has asked for a recorded vote, and the motion is in front of you on the screen.
All in favor of the motion as presented, please stand to be counted. Showing in favor is Counselor Miles, Counselor Fortini, Counselor Bowman, Counselor Maderos, Mayor Jeffrey, Counselor Dillon, Counselor Spogvieri, Counselor Pleschey, Counselor Willens, Counselor Moore, and Counselor Gibson. Madam Mayor, that motion carries unanimously eleven to zero.
So I have a few more bits of business. Did you want to speak before the business, Harry?
Yes.
Okay.
I just wanted to thank Larry and his team that's here, Joe and Sandy. Every day, I remember a year ago, it was April, Larry said he would come and see me in Brampton. It was a rainy, blustery, awful day in April, and we drove down Kennedy Road, and I said, that's where I lose hope for Brampton. And Larry said, no, you can never lose hope. You got to keep dreaming. I'm so glad you took on the role. You motivated us each day for the last year, and really made us step up, as well as you, Joe, and Sandy. And I just really wanted to say thanks on behalf of all the staff. You've really left us a lasting impression, and we really are going to miss you as we move forward. Thanks so much.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion. This is item six point one, moved by Counselor Moore, seconded by Counselor Dillon, that the following correspondence to the special council meeting, Brampton Vision Living Mosaic, be received, from Sarah Anderson, from Pauline Thornham, from Marie Blazek, from John Kanonopoulos, from Betty Ann Goldstein. All those in favor, receipt. That's carried. We now are at public question period. This is where we invite members of the public to come forward to the podium, ask any questions about any decision made by council at today's meeting. Thank you so much for not coming down. Our next item of business is item nine, the confirming bylaw. I have a motion moved by Counselor Willens, seconded by Counselor Dillon, that the following bylaw before council to special meeting of May seventh, two thousand eighteen, be given the required numbers of reading, taken by the mayor and the city clerk and the corporate seal affixed thereto to confirm the proceedings of this special council meeting held on May seventh. All those in favor. The last item of business is our favorite, adjournment. Thank you, members, for your respectful consideration and decisions this evening. Thank you to staff for all the information and advice. Council is next scheduled to meet Wednesday, May sixteenth, at nine-thirty. This meeting will be held at Alderley due to scheduled council chamber renovations, which you heard about earlier this evening. Wednesday, May thirtieth, at nine-thirty, this meeting will be held in the West Tower in Boardroom, two C D, due to the scheduled council chamber renovations. I have a motion moved by Counselor Bowman, seconded by Counselor Willens. Council do now adjourn to meet again for the regular meeting of council on Wednesday, May sixteenth, at nine-thirty, or at the call of the mayor. All those in favor? That's carried. We're now adjourned. Thank you.